Hello, everyone. Welcome to the March 21st Town Council Workshop. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The Republic of Georgia, the Constitution stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just as a quick administrative note before we start, the first agenda item, it's Fox Hollow Intersection Safety Concerns Recommendations, followed by a discussion to discontinue portions of Water Street. We are not going to discuss Fox Hollow pending some more recent legal information that members of the council got. We want them all to have the opportunity to review it before we get into that conversation. Also, I just wanted to make a quick note, if by leave of the council, that I ask, one of the reasons I wanted to make sure before the meeting, when we set all the lights off here, that we please try, use the lights, limit yourself to one statement and then question with a couple follow-up questions, two follow-up questions, to give everyone an opportunity to make sure that everyone's voice is heard, and we can certainly go back to people after everyone's had the opportunity to talk. I just want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to be heard. With that, the next step is Town Council to consider acceptance of minutes.
You know, I didn't see the minutes that she had put in there.
There are...
Unless they're someplace else.
They're not there.
I didn't see any minutes.
Yep. So, we're going to postpone that. Mr. Administrator, could you make sure that...
Yep.
...get into the next meeting thing?
Yes.
Following that, the Town Administrator Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In my report that I provided you, we received an update as to the question on insurance for the community center relative to the rental of property. Tom Dunn from the local government center has provided an email which I provided to all of you. Basically, what he says is that anybody that may be renting the facility would be covered under the town's general liability insurance. However, to the extent possible, the town should try as much as possible to have individual or groups obtain a certificate of insurance in order to, and make the town additionally insured, so that if something does happen, that their insurance would take care of it, and we don't get into a sort of a quagmire. So, for groups like the Boy Scout, Girl Scouts, a shower, small wedding reception, things like that, it would be covered underneath the policy, but we wanted to provide that for the council to review. The next item is a request from the town of Epping. There's a need to perambulate the line between the town and Newmarket and Epping. That's a requirement that every seven years, communities are supposed to perambulate their lines, to make sure that they don't disappear, I guess. I'm just wondering if there is a councilor that would like to meet with the Epping selectmen to undertake that, so be discussed.
Before we move on to that, there's a couple of questions from the insurance, I think.
Okay.
Counselor Lebranche, do you have...
No, actually, I was just going to mention, I had to put that on when we were talking about the minutes, but you should probably just sort of recommend mention that Counselor Zink is not here this evening.
Oh, very good. Thank you very much. Counselor Zink is not here. He is on vacation with his family in Florida. Counselor Levy, do you have a comment on the insurance?
Got a question, actually. What's our insurance coverage, Ed? If it did fall on the town, is it a million? Is it two million?
Two million.
Two million?
Yep.
And that would, so if there was any incident over at the community center or rec center or whatever, it would be up to $2 million?
Cap.
Heart blanche?
Yep.
Well, that should pretty much cover it.
Good.
We received a letter from the local government center, the Health Insurance Trust, indicating that the town's health insurance rate is going down 6.2% from what we are currently paying. If you recall, during the timeframe of the budget development, we had received a maximum guaranteed rate of minus 1.3, and it's come back that it'll go down 6.2%. And dental will go down approximately 8.8%. So, town's going to realize some savings in the health insurance line. I provided you a application to the state by the, a group, actually, it's from the state, that is going to be doing some oyster seeding, reseeding in the Lamprey River and along with the Swampscott River. And we have received the renewal of the groundwater management permit for the town's landfill and expansion of the groundwater management zone, which we've been working with the folks who, the property we're attaching a easement on, so that way we can keep it within, you know, keep that area restricted as to the removal of water. And hopefully, we won't have to see a migration of the 1-4 diacs and that we saw earlier into that area. That's very important. The other thing I just wanted to bring up for the council, I provided in your boxes a letter from Jim Hilton relative to the bids for the dugout. And I just can't, I can't seem to find my letter. This one. Yes. We received five bids. The lowest bid is from EMD Home Improvements, located on Six Rutherford Road, for a bid of $15,620. The bids range from 15,620 to 22,567, and Jim is recommending that the council approve the proposal to EMD home improvement at this point in time. Now, if you recall, passed a resolution at the last meeting for up to $22,000 of impact fee funds for this, and comes in underneath that, and they're going to be able to begin relatively soon, so we may have them completed for the season, the upcoming season. And the other thing I just wanted to bring up quickly was, we had talked about the work that Matt Angel and Term Finance Director and I have been working on, the Black Bear Tiff. I just wanted to report that Mr. Angel and I met with representatives from DRA, Department of Revenue and Administration, last week, had a long conversation with them. They've asked us to forward to them several questions that we had, so that they could respond to it. We're hoping to get a response back prior to the next council's meeting on that regard. And at the meeting on the April 4th, we'll hope to finalize, to report everything to the council at that point in time, to resolve some of the issues and questions that are out there on that regard. And I did get together with Counselor Levy and went through the budget with him, and based upon the review, from what Counselor Levy pointed out and what I had also indicated, came up with approximately $286,000 in savings that we can freeze at this point in time going forward. Most of it is from a variety of different areas, the largest being in the area of direct assistance. There's probably around close to $90,000 that we're going to be able to freeze, so. Great, and that's it.
Counselor Bentley.
First, I had one question, but now I have a comment. If I could do both. I didn't hear if there was an answer on the boundary line walk. We kind of did that, then a light went on. Did anyone answer that they would do that?
I just sort of said it, the council could discuss it as to whom.
Oh, I thought you wanted one now.
If I can get somebody that wants to do it, just let me know, and I would just contact the Epping office and let them know.
That's fine. I'll certainly be involved in that. If no one else wants to, I will.
Anyone else want to be involved?
Just clarify that boundary line walk.
Basically, what they do is, they will go to the, you know, two or three points of, you know, there's always boundaries, stone boundaries. They go look at them, make sure they're okay, that they haven't been removed, that the markings on them are legible. Basically, they might say an E and an N indicating Epping and Newmarket. They see that, they then put together a report, and both councils, both the council and the selectmen in Epping sign off on that, that they perambulated the line, it's still there, and move forward and...
Is that sort of the 108 area?
No, it's Jacob's Well Road off of Grant Road, Gary.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to figure. So, it's over in that area?
Yes.
Thank you.
We should be doing it, as I said, every seven years. It's sort of one of those ancient things that's a holdover over time. Maybe what we just need to do is GPS it and go around and take care of it, and that would be something we should do if we do perambulate the line.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Counselor Lebranche.
This is a different subject, so it's...
Yeah, okay, let's finish this real quick. Does anyone have an issue with Counselor Bentley being the representative for the walk to Epping? All right. He's your man. Counselor Lebranche.
Okay. I know this is a workshop, we generally don't do motions, but I'm curious if the chair would take a motion on the dugout bid process, so that they get started on that.
Nothing like breaking the rules right before we start. I would entertain a motion on that, just because of the timing.
Okay, I'd be happy to make a motion to have the Recreation Department go with the bid from EDM Home Improvements for the dugouts on what I believe is the B field, with a cost not to exceed $15,620.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any discussion?
Well, just for everyone at home, I think, you know, the bid process.
Go ahead.
Is, you get three bids, you get five bids, and it does have the stip... Not only was this EDM the lowest bidder, but also had promised that he could get it in nine days from start, which would allow the team to use it this year, so I think it's a win-win. It'll get done quicker than a couple of others could have it, and it'll be cheaper, so. And it's the money we just spoke about that was already, we were going to lose it if we didn't use it.
Right, it's the impact fee money that goes away.
Correct.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Administrator, we have the vote.
Counselor Wright.
Aye.
Counselor Levy?
Aye.
Counselor Lebranche?
Aye.
Counselor Carmichael?
Aye.
Counselor Bentley?
Aye.
Chairman Nizarro?
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. Counselor Levy, you've been waiting patiently.
Just two quick things. I did go over the budget with, the Town Administrator is very patient, and I appreciate the time it took with me. It might be nice if it could be all annotated on a sheet, so we could all see it, and, you know, what was budgeted, what has been spent in the savings, just so it's all, you know, so everybody has it. And the only other question I had was the impact fee money. How much do we need to return? Because I, maybe I missed it, but we lost some. Is that going to, is Matt, you don't have to do it now, Matt, but are you going to go over that afterwards, or?
Not tonight.
Because I was just curious, how much are we losing?
If I recall correctly, the amount that we're losing for all the different impact fee funds is about $146,000 that we have to return back to the owners of these parcels.
And, if I may?
Yes.
While Matt's at the microphone talking about that, one of the things that we discussed was for the council to vote, to grant me the authority to send letters to all of the individuals relative to the, you know, that they're going to be getting funds back. It says it's the council's responsibility to do that, unless you all want to come in and sign the letters. If not, I would be happy to, for us to begin, start producing that and sending it out to the folks. The council is not going to have a problem with that.
Is it time-sensitive that we need to do that today, or is it something that we can do at the business?
No.
No, it's not time-sensitive.
Okay, thank you.
It just, they just accrue interest.
Okay.
What accrue? How much?
And what the bank gives us, because the money is sitting in a bank account right now. That's one basis point, if they're lucky. Yeah.
Remind the counselors to press their buttons if they want to talk. Counselor Bentley.
Well, I just thought it should be noted to thank Gary for that, and I pushed it before he just made his statement, so I was thinking, whatever he saw, it'd be good that we could all see that, so us, the Budget Committee people going forward, can obviously see something that several 13, 15 sets of eyes, you know, maybe wouldn't see. So, I commend him for that work, and I agree with giving us something, so we know why 90,000 was, you know. And then lastly, if I could just, Ed Longer, a 50-year-plus resident of the town, passed away, a veteran, and I just wanted to send my condolences to Rita, and Chrissy, and Janet, and Ralph, and Jim, and the whole Longer family, another great American. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Lebranche.
In reference to the freezing of the funds, will we be, will the council sign off on that as a resolution as they did on the previous?
If the council saw wishes, we could do that, yes.
If that's the appropriate course of action?
Yep.
Right. Anything, any other comments on the Town Administrator's report?
We going to answer the thing about Matt and the funds going back, or did you just answer that?
I put it on for the agenda for the fourth.
Okay, could I have a comment about that? I can wait. Thank you.
I just want to, before we move on, I also want to thank Counselor Levy and the Town Administrator for doing that. That's, I think, it's something he's brought up several times in meetings, and I'm glad it got addressed, and I think that we should find a way to codify it, so that we do all see it, so that when we're in the budgeting process, it should be the type of thing that we're looking at during the budgeting process, to see how we got over budgeted in certain items, so.
Budgeting 101.
There you go. Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Next agenda item is discussion to discontinue portions of Water Street.
As you recall, there is a discrepancy between the 1864 boundary of Water Street and, which is fairly large, and what we have on the ground. In speaking with Attorney Richardson, we are going to, he recommended that the town follow specific RSA. I don't remember what it is off the top of my head. I apologize for that. But we need to hold a public hearing. We have sent letters to the residents, there are four parcels on Water Street, indicating that the council will hold a public hearing on April 4th at the conclusion of the special town meeting. For the purposes of discontinuing those portions of Water Street outside the boundaries as it currently exists on the ground, return that property back to the individuals at that point in time. And that'll be on Wednesday, we'll have a resolution for the council to adopt at that point in time.
Counselor Levy.
So, are we actually going to be turning that land over to the landowners?
Yes.
We're going to be deeding it over to them?
What we're going to do will be referencing the plan that we have, that was provided by Dusset, and recording that to more realize, as opposed to trying to figure out the exact amount of land itself. We could do either, but one of them is going to take a lot of legal expenses, and basically, the plan that Bill Dusset provided the council shows, and a colored area, land that is part of the 1864 plan, road layout, and where buildings have encroached upon it, or the land, you know, is just sort of taken over by the butters as they built it, so.
Okay, so, the reason I'm asking is, if anybody, for sake of argument, has an accident or gets hurt, that is no longer town land, we don't have any liability, it will be the landowner's property?
That's correct. There's a specific RSA relating to that also.
And just in finishing, are they going to pay the legal fees to do this, or how's that going to work? Just a question.
Well, I guess that's a question the council needs to have a discussion, if there are legal costs involved. I mean, right now, the legal cost is, you know, the request to Attorney Richardson as to, the procedure is that we need to follow. Beyond that, it's the council's position to vote whether they're going to discontinue those portions beyond that, and then a recording of the map itself.
Well, yeah, I guess my, the only reason I brought it up is because, you know, if we have to spend X amount of dollars, and they are getting a benefit, which is fine. With me, I was just asking the question if they would, you know, reimburse the town for that, because they're basically getting the land.
If that's the decision of the council...
I don't know how much money is at stake, but I had to bring it up.
Counselor Bentley.
I brought it up on the left. I don't really care if it's $100 or $10,000. It was our land, it was deemed, we weren't in error, they're actually on our land, so we're actually giving them something, so whether it's $100 or $10,000, I would think they need to be giving something. We're giving them land technically, probably, and it would be a mess. We could, say, shave the corner of that building off our land, because it shouldn't be there. And I'm obviously being facetious, we're not going to do that, but if we're going to give them the land, I would hope that they would pony up and do the right thing, because I think, looks like we're trying to do the right thing and end it the quickest way, so. I have a question about the legal fees, too.
Counselor Lebranche.
If I remember correctly, when we had this discussion at the last meeting, there was an individual here from Dusset Survey that mentioned that there was still a lot of work that needed to be done, that the project, you know, that the maps or whatever it is had, were not completed, so, you know, to me, I think there's potentially some substantial fees involved, and quite honestly, I think, as the vice chair said, if, you know, I don't believe the town should, it should be on the town's dime, or nickel.
I will scope that out and report back to the council at the meeting on the 4th, and invite Bill Dusset to attend the meeting to talk about more. Justin Richardson will be at the meeting, because of the special town meeting, to address any questions that may come up, so we can have a discussion with him, and I'll ask him to annotate his time that he's expended so far on this regard.
Yeah, any numbers we could get on what we think the expected cost is going to be, projected cost, even if it's an estimate, would be helpful in us making our decision.
Very good.
Next agenda item, Term Finance Director Matt Angel.
Is he here? A point of mind?
Yes.
It's pertinent to what the council is about to do, and Mr. Fillion has follow-up information. Like to, we foresee something going extremely wrong here, we'd like to bring it to the council's attention.
Okay, I think what he's going to talk about right now is going to actually be a little diff... Are you going to go right into...
I was going to do the council orders first.
The resolutions first?
Yeah.
Okay, I will allow, yes.
Actually, the resolutions this evening, taking the money from the Water Capital Reserve Funds, under municipal budget law, under expenditures 32,8, limitation of expenditures, no Board of Selectmen, School Board, Village District Commissioners, or any other officer, employer, agency, or municipality acting as such, shall pay or agree to pay any money or incur any liability involving the expenditure of any money for any purpose in excess of the amount that was appropriated by the legislative body for that purpose, or for any purpose for which no appropriation has been made. In other words, the appropriation by the legislative body for that purpose, that's the budget that was approved. So, the budget that was approved did not have this appropriation in it, as approved by the legislative body. So, therefore, the town council cannot appropriate that money to be used. If Mr. Angel could answer, if he was aware of that section of municipal budget law, before he did the resolutions up.
Mr. Angel.
Your side?
Well, no, a follow-up, a question, but I have to ask through the chair.
Yeah.
I believe that she's correct, that you can appropriate out of fund balance, and that's one of the reasons why we have the council orders tonight, because there's a different RSA that gives you the authority to transfer funds to the capital reserve funds, and then transfer them back out. And that has been verified also with the town council, and it's my understanding, as well as from seeing other communities doing the same thing.
Mr. Croxton.
I wonder if that follows, falls under 3210, transfer of appropriations?
It does not. It follows Chapter 35, Capital Reserve Funds.
Okay, so, in that, in that light, which RSA is it?
RSA 357 gives the, let me read it. It gives any waterworks or sewer department of a city or town organized by the general law or special act of the legislature, and financed principally by water and sewer rentals, made by unanimous vote of the body charged with administration thereof, whether the local governing body, Water Board, or Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners, establish a capital reserve fund for said department for the purposes as provided in RSA 351, colon 1, sorry. Such reserves shall be established only from the surplus, fund balance, from water and sewer rentals, and no part thereof shall be made from appropriations by said city or town. Okay? The Water Capital Reserve Fund has been established previously, and it's my understanding that it was also established under authority of the town meeting.
So, my follow-up question is, then this money being used is for the infrastructures that occurred downtown, in the downtown Tiff section, so therefore, we should be using downtown Tiff money? That was the purpose of the Tiff money, was for infrastructure, and I don't know that we can legally use money that water users and sewer users have put into the capital reserve fund for a project downtown that was supposed to be financed with Tiff money.
Thank you. I think we understand your point. Town Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that what we have to keep in mind here is that back in 2010, 2008, excuse me, the town council adopted a resolution of which the $535,000 that Mr. Angel is going to be speaking about soon, was appropriated by the town council to be used towards the downtown project. Unfortunately, the procedure that the council adopted at that time, not knowing that we should have followed a certain one, prevented that, those dollars from being transferred. And what Mr. Angel is seeking to do at this point is to have the council adopt a series of resolutions that creates an orderly transfer of those funds, so that the, that way, the downtown project can be closed out, and whatever balance, of which there is a balance, can be returned to the general fund and close it out.
Are you going to walk us through how we got to this point?
Yes.
Thank you.
That we can ask.
Yeah. All right. If you look at Town Council Order 2008-10, if you want, I have a copy here, I can pass it around, okay? In there, it says that to use water fund balance, $535,425, to be transferred into the enhancement fund, to use as a funding source for the downtown project, okay? Part of that, just as a note for her, part of the funding source for this particular project is also Tiff funds, so it's not really, it's a capital project fund, it's not within sight of the downtown Tiff, okay? Anyways, because I can't find statutory authority to transfer the $535,000, I'm trying to do the next best thing, to accomplish what the town council back in 2008 had anticipated, and that is to utilize Chapter 35 of the RSAs, which grant this board authority to transfer surplus funds from fund balance of the water and sewer fund, but specifically here, the water fund, to a capital reserve fund. The capital reserve funds are held by the trustees of trust funds, and I typically hear people in town call it CIP funds. I'm calling it capital reserve funds, because that's the statutory language for this, okay? And then, then withdraw the funds from the capital reserve fund and put it into the downtown enhancement fund, thus closing that capital project, okay? Any questions?
No one's pushed it yet.
Anyway, I don't want to help out. Why don't you go with...
All right, Mr. Fillion. Why not?
I've been on capital reserve fund for quite a while. Basically, the problem is, Water Department Capital Reserve Fund now, this is Chapter 35, Section 1 fund, and what they're talking about is using the 357 fund, and that requires an entirely separate capital reserve fund to be set up. There are very strict conditions on it. It must be approved unanimously by the council, or by the Board of Water Commissioners, if it was done so. I mean, it's six to one, or a five to two vote, does not carry, it's got to be done unanimously, and the money that can be spent out of a 357 fund is very limited to what it can be done at. If you look at the statute 357, you'll see the very restrictive conditions there are for spending. Well, first, you have to set it up. We don't, we do not have a capital reserve 35, Section 7 fund right now, so the council would have to go through a process, through public hearings and whatever, to set up a 35, Section 7, capital reserve fund, and then they would have to go through it, and it's quite restrictive, but it's not, it's only a two-page thing.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
This statute right here that you're referencing, that deals specifically, though, with the water fund itself, not necessarily capital reserve fund.
Right, and basically, what this says, Chapter 38, RSA 38, municipal electric, gas, and water... electric, gas, and water systems, what it says is, water funds from the collection shall be kept in a separate districting fund to be known as the water fund. Such funds shall be allowed to accumulate from year to year, shall not be commingled with town or city tax revenues, and shall not be deemed part of the municipal's general fund accumulated as per. Such fund may be expended only for the purposes specified in thirty-eight-twenty-eight, which is water uses. And it says, all it says, expenditures shall be within the amounts appropriated by the local legislative body. So any expenditures out of that has to be approved by the local legislative body for a thirty, but a thirty-five-seven fund can, you can, if you went through the process of setting up a thirty-five-seven fund, it's quite, I have some letters from the Department of Revenue in this fashion on it when we tried to do it several years ago, but it is quite cumbersome, but.
Thank you, Mr. President.
So basically, all I'm saying is, we do not have a capital reserve fund to put this, that you people can put this into now, but if you set up a Chapter thirty-five, Section Seven fund, you could do it if you went through the process and do it.
Thank you. Did you want to comment on that?
Sure. It's, the, the statute that he was referencing is the, the statute that sets up the, the Fund Twenty on the, the town's general ledger system. You, you can't grab the revenues or the expenditures, however, you can move the surplus from prior years and, and move it over to a capital reserve fund. It is my understanding that, that a capital reserve fund under thirty-five-seven does exist, because it does, it is on a list of, from the trustees of trust funds, as a capital reserve fund.
Do you have a Section Seven fund now?
It's, it's on a list from the capital reserve, the trustees of the trust funds.
You have a thirty-five, Section One, capital reserve, water department capital reserve.
Well, so we don't get into a back and forth here, we'll get back. And just as a, as a procedural point of order, as, as a reminder, even though public comment is not, normally occurs at a workshop, you can just say your name and address when you step up to the microphone. Counselor Levy.
First, just a procedural thing, I think on the, on page nineteen of our packet, and that's the one related to, I'm sorry, I'll give you the resolution number, number twenty-eleven dash twenty-twelve dash eighteen, there's a, there's a misprint. It, third line down, it says, where's the proper procedure, should have been to transfer from the water fund into the water capital reserve fund?
Oh, yeah.
Which is almost.
Well, fund accounting is fun.
It's a nice metaphor.
Yeah.
But that said, it should be obviously fun. I just made a couple of notations, because I was very confused with this, transferring this, and we spoke earlier today a little bit, and my notes are, I'll just read them. I said, the downtown TIF, why didn't the money generated from the downtown TIF excluding grants pay for the water upgrades? Why are the monies from the water fund of the CIP being used to pay off the downtown enhancement fund? I just got a couple of quick notes, and I'll just read them off, because it's easier. I don't understand how this can be done. Why isn't the TIF paying for the capital improvements? What is the impact on the town's water capital reserve fund? And that, that's one of my concerns, because I don't know how much it's going to deplete it. And the last question I had was, almost there.
All right, let me recap. Depleting, that's your first question, right?
Yeah, why don't we stick with that?
Okay. Basically, you're moving funds into the capital reserve and then withdrawing them, so it's, it has a net effect of zero to the capital reserve fund. So you're not drawing down any money? Really, what you're doing is you're drawing down surplus funds from the water fund and moving it into capital reserve, and then withdrawing it from capital reserve into the enhancement.
But when we, okay, so just for everyone's identification, so when we take this money out of the water fund?
Yes.
And then, basically, pay off this expense or zero out the books, is that?
It zeros out the books, so that that particular fund, the enhancement fund, is, will be done. It'll be completed. This is the, the closure of the, you remember at the beginning of the term that I was here, there was surplus revenues in the downtown TIF, and there was a four million dollar deficit in the enhancement fund. This will close that.
Okay, so my only question, Matt, is when you take that, I guess I'm, I'm questioning, and I don't know the answer, that's why I'm asking, because I was confused today when I called you. This money that you're taking to pay this, you know, to pay it off, if, if I'm a water user, and I live outside of the downtown enhancement, or the TIF, or whatever you call it, whatever it's called, the money I've been paying for my water theoretically is now going into paying this deficit off, or, or this expense, correct?
It goes towards the water project portion of the Main Street Enhancement, okay?
And that's the next?
So it's improving the water system specifically.
Okay, so that's, that's the nexus of my question. If you have a TIF, isn't it required that the TIF, the captured revenue from the TIF, repay the costs associated with the work done within the TIF? And that's, that was what I called you about, and I was, you know, because it seems.
That can certain, that argument can certainly be made, okay? But what I'm working with is what the, the town council from two thousand and eight wanted to do, and, and try to accomplish it through means that I know can be done under the RSAs.
Counselor Branch.
I obviously don't have my notes in front of me this evening, but I do believe that in reference to Counselor Levy's, you know, why didn't the TIF pay, which would make perfect sense, for the TIF to pay for any, any project that was done down there. But I do believe that this was part of some Clean Water Act or something where we received funding, but we had to match. Does, does that ring a bell, Mr. Winowski? We, we had to actually supply money outside of the, the TIF, you know, from, from the actual water fund to, or whatever fund it was, to be part of a matching grant. It just seems to me that that was part of the process back then, but that was four years ago.
Yeah, I believe that that's correct. There was both, on the water side and the sewer side, there were funds that we received from the state, and it was our responsibility to put X dollars in, and we received dollars back.
That makes sense? Something that?
It doesn't. It makes sense, but I, obviously, I wasn't here, so I don't, I don't have any knowledge of the project. I'm just trying to accomplish what that town council resolution is asking. If this board wants to choose some other method, that's.
Do you have the resolution?
I do have the resolution, yeah.
Counselor Branch, are you done?
Yes.
Vice Chair.
I'll wait.
You'll wait? I, if no one else has comments, I have a question. How did the five hundred thirty-five thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars get into the water fund balance in the first place? Is that water users, or is it something that was transferred at some point?
No, it's, it's through water rates and rentals, okay? So what is being billed to the water users minus the expenditures to operate the funds, that fund or that system? Whatever remains accumulates in fund balance. So that accumulation, that's what we're pulling out and putting into a capital reserve fund.
So, as a layperson listening to this, how does, and pardon the facetiousness in this, how does moving it from pile A through bucket B, through bucket C, eventually getting it to D, not look like to the layperson like you're laundering money?
Yeah, it, it, the statute.
I couldn't have said it any better.
No. It's a crazy way of doing it, but it's the only mechanism to accomplish the intent of the board at the time, okay? Because I don't have any other RSAs to, to, to say that they can transfer surplus fund balance directly to the enhancement fund.
So just clarifying question, this is my third, so I'm done after this. It is the statutory, the way the statutes are written, this is the only way to get across what the two thousand eight council attempted to do?
Yes. Let's put it in a different perspective. Say, say for example, the town wanted to expand the water system, and they wanted to use the surplus fund balance to do it, okay? Or the, the town council wanted to do it. They could withdraw the funds out of the fund balance, put it in the capital reserve fund, and then draw it back out to go and expand the system. They could have done this mechanism to put in the, the water main all the way out to the car wash, but now that town meeting said no, it can't be done.
Okay. Counselor Bentley.
With all, you know, due respect to the two thousand eight council, we don't know what they're intending, what they're thinking was right now, and certainly with no disrespect to you, Matt. I almost think, let's do some due diligence and have Matt go look at these questions Mr. Fillion, Mr. Quox brought up. He said there's no, you know, there's no real rush on us. We appreciate, we were trying to close this whole deficit thing out, there's been a ton of hard work, but it seems like there's a couple maybe floating questions, and I say, let's, you know, get those questions answered, this is my opinion, and try to put this to rest and make sure that every question's satisfied, so.
Good?
Yes.
Counselor Levy.
Did Mike want to? I don't know.
You were first.
I, I agree with what Counselor Bentley said. I, you know, if, if the, and I'm sure there was no ill intent, I don't think it's an issue at all, but if, if something wanted to be accomplished in oh-eight, regardless of the motivation, and it wasn't maybe the exact, I don't want to use disparaging words, proper way to do it, or whatever the terminology is. I, I would prefer, you know, and I, you, you were going to talk about options before you got sidetracked a couple of minutes ago with questions. What are the alternatives? One we spoke about earlier today briefly was the TIF, could pay it off, but it wouldn't close out the TIF, meaning that the.
The TIF doesn't have enough funds to transfer in to pay this five hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Well, would they have to pay it all off at once?
The, the, the detriment to that would be, if you didn't close out the TIF, the captured value of the TIF wouldn't go back to the general fund and reducing the tax rate. So if you, if you tried to keep the TIF open to pay off the five hundred and thirty-five thousand, the tax rate would still remain just a little bit high to do that. And so basically, what you're doing is, is you're shifting the burden from the water ratepayers to the taxpayers in general. Yeah.
Any more follow-ups?
I don't, I just don't under, it doesn't make sense to me. I apologize, it just doesn't make sense.
If you look at the town's overall assessed value, okay, the, to fund the TIF, the town carves out a portion of the assessed value, and then applies the tax rate to that and transfers the money into the TIF. So say for example, well, right now, about, I, I'm going to take a guess, say it's going to be like ninety-eight percent of the assessed value pays for the general fund, where two percent pays for the TIFs, okay? So if you use the TIF as a funding source to, to fund this five hundred and thirty-five thousand, then that two percent can't get closed back out to the general fund. So you're not using a hundred percent of the town's valuation against its appropriations to reduce the tax rate. I, I do have a presentation that will touch this.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll wait until you're ready, because it's just not clicking.
So, because basically, to fund the TIF, you're funneling a portion of tax revenues into the TIF fund, okay? So if you want to use TIF revenues, you're still maintaining the tax rate, you know, it's, you're not benefiting the taxpayers by closing out the TIF. Because that captured value that we're talking about at the last meeting would not go back to the general fund and reduce the tax rate, okay? So that's why, you know, if, if the town decides to, to keep the downtown TIF open, there are other problems that go along with it as well. We didn't make an appropriation at town meeting to do this.
Counselor Branch.
Matt, do you have a copy of Resolution two thousand seven-thirty-two?
I do not. I do upstairs, but not with me.
Could you, to, I guess to help clarify some of this, could you include both those and maybe make sure the council gets a copy of, of?
Yeah.
Two thousand seven-thirty-two and two thousand eight-ten. Thank you.
Dave, any other comments?
I'm excited, thank you.
Anyone else? I'm going to say my second comment before you say your third. It seems like we're like, being forced into forensic legislating now, where we're having to go back and look at what the intention of a council four years ago was when, when they passed, whereas, to me, I think the best course of action forward is to say, what does this council want to do in order to, to write this? Now, I don't know if this is it, it sounds like, I know that there's a lot of more questions out there that have to be answered before we can even get to a place where I think we're ready to vote on this, in, in my opinion, and I'm just one of seven up here. But, yeah, that's just where I sit on it right now. Counselor Bentley.
The chair had an idea last week about getting the agendas out ahead of time and let, you know, not just for the councils to see, but we talked about one point, and I don't know how close we are, but this would be a perfect example of one, getting the agenda, get the, the answers from Matt and questions to Matt, and get it on the site so town folk can see this, and, and the essence of getting meeting, you know, some of these questions could possibly be asked earlier, and, and, you know, Matt might already had an answer, I know how he operates. If he, if he saw a question two or three days ago, he'd have come in tonight with that already. So I still, we're not going to get anywhere tonight, we're going to keep bouncing back, volleying on TIF. I think we need to get questions, and any other folks that have questions, you know, get them, whatever the channel is, to Matt, and let's come back and hope we can, I agree, we're trying to go the attempt of four years ago, was it right then, is it right now, have other things changed, and, and try to roll up our sleeves at that point and get this taken care of.
So we're going to have this.
Back on the agenda.
Back on the agenda.
Oh, do you mind if I do a quick presentation?
Is any, anyone on the council having objection?
No. Okay. This, this presentation is going to be my last presentation about the, the revenue shortfall. All right, and I'm waiting for the projector to come up.
It's so dark in here.
Yeah. Unfortunately, this, the, quick summary, the revenue shortfall has been closed, it comes with both good, good and bad. Close it now, why is it not coming on?
We turn the lights on until that thing's going. There you go. I can see the buttons.
Matt, are you taking into consideration the two hundred and eighty-six thousand Ed talked about earlier?
No.
Okay. Just let it ask.
Function F-eight? Or is F-six on this one?
F-six. Protector, oh, is the projector plugged in? All right. It's not plugged in.
To.
Anyways, let me just do my presentation just from the laptop here, and I'll just turn this off.
Are we going to need to see, are we going to need to see this to see if it makes sense?
Basically, the, the presentation is more or less, first, is to benefit the two new counselors, just to kind of talk about what the, what generated the shortfall, and then also talk about the reason why the shortfall was closed.
Would, would it be possible, I mean, it's going to take a couple of minutes to plug it in, everything, would, would it be possible procedurally correct to have him set that up while we're talking to Director Malaski about the snowstorm parking van? Keep it moving along.
Diane's next.
Oh, but Diane's next. Okay, I'm sorry, while we're talking to.
I got your back, Diane.
Sorry, Diane, I jumped right past three there. Diane, do you want to speak about the dam study committee direction and goals?
I'd be happy to.
Got twelve seconds.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council. Just in way of a little bit of background, at the January meeting of the town council, a committee was set up, the McAllen Dam Removal Steering Committee was set up to work with staff to implement the warrant article that was passed by the town meeting in two thousand and one, which appropriated funds to complete, or to, towards, I should say, a feasibility study to look at the removal of the McAllen Dam as an alternative to the town incurring expenses to repair the dam. as an alternative to the town incurring expenses to repair the dam. And at the meeting, the town council set up a steering committee made up of three citizens at large. Mr. Hawkins was here this evening. He had to run out, but he's one of our committee members. Since the committee was established, we've had two meetings. And, um, we had a meeting in February where we put together some draft goals and objectives to sort of guide the work, if you will, of the committee. And the committee wanted to, um, touch base, if you will, with the town council to make sure that we were on the right track so that we could move forward. And I've provided, um, to Ed, which I believe has been provided in your packets, a summary of the goals and objectives, and if you'll bear with me one minute. Wrong notebook. Overall, the committee is not set up to make a recommendation, if you will, on whether or not the dam should be removed, but to, or not, but to actually work with the staff to, um, hire a consultant who will undertake a feasibility study that will look at both the short-term and the long-term impacts of dam removal. And the committee envisions that it would assist in this process by reviewing, um, the consultant proposals and providing advice to staff on, um, the selection of the consultant, provide interviews, check references, and, um, once the consultant is on board to provide assistance in, um, doing public education and outreach, and to, uh, make presentations such as this to the town council as needed, just to check back to make sure that we're, again, right, on the right track and we're moving forward in the direction that everyone envisions. We also, um, discussed what the contents of the feasibility study should be. And there's a list here where, you know, we'd look at, um, things such as the cultural resource impacts, impacts on water quality, impacts on, uh, property values, structural impacts, flooding impacts, um, impacts on wildlife. There's a whole list of items that would be looked at as part of this feasibility study. And, um, the committee would work, again, with staff and provide input throughout the process so that in the end, the product that we have is something that is reflective of what the community wishes and will provide the kind of information that the town needs to make what's going to be a very difficult decision. So, um, I guess I wanted to get some feedback from you. I did provide a report to give you an update on where we are. Um, since our last meeting, we did, um, receive some discouraging news. We did not receive the grant from the American Rivers Program that we had submitted and worked hard on. We submitted that the end of, um, of December. So that's one grant that we can't count on, but we do have another grant that we submitted the end of February that's still in the pipeline, if, so to speak, and we're hoping that that's going to go forward. And we're continuing with our grant writing so that we'll, um, accumulate the needed funding so that we can go forward. Uh, the committee has also taken a first stab at putting together the requests for proposals, and we have a second draft. I think we have a great committee with a lot of expertise, um, folks representing engineering, legal, and, um, natural resource interests. And we also have some representation from the local or the regional, uh, Lamprey River Watershed Association. So we have a good team, I think, and we're moving forward. And I'd be happy to, um, open it up to any questions that you might have, um, at this point.
The first person to give feedback will be Council Levy.
Just a couple of things, Diane. Nice synopsis. It was great, you know, gave us an idea of what's, what's going, going on in the committee. The consultant for the dam study that you're looking to hire, because this is kind of a controversial issue, as I think you well know.
We absolutely know it's controversial.
Where are they going to find this person, meaning you guys ultimately, and what's the budget for this person?
Okay.
And is it going to be a public, just, is it going to be a public comment, you know, on the consultant? Just because you don't want to end up-
If you would like, like to be involved in that process, I think that was one of the things the committee wanted to, you know, find out. To what extent do you want to be involved in the selection process? We, of course, are going to come forward when, you know, with a, a resolution, you know, before any contract is awarded to make sure that everybody's on board with the selection and the dollar amount and so forth. But if there, the town council would like to get involved in that process, you know, we certainly would entertain that. The committee also suggested, well, maybe there might be a town council representative who might like to sit in on the meetings. We are meeting once a month. We're meeting, um, the last Monday of the month. And the committee is, you know, desires to have the public be involved, so to speak. All our meetings are going to be posted, and, um, if there's members of the public who'd like to come to our meetings, they're more than welcome to attend. So I guess it's really up to you how you would like to, um, how involved in that process you would like to become.
You had, you had two other questions.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't really asking personally to be involved, what, what I-
We're always looking for volunteer's care.
Let me tell you, I, I know what it's like to be in the middle of a controversial issue. In the spirit of that, though, I think if, when you do, you know, hire that individual, I think it would be very appropriate to have a public, uh, comment, you know, a meeting that the public could come to, ask questions of the consultant, because, you know, I think this is, you know, there's some people that are very, as you know, concerned about property values, et cetera, and the use of the, so. Anyway, that was that. And did you, do you have a budget number?
Well, the range of the study is between $125,000 and $150,000.
So the consultant would be what?
And, well, the consultant would be the full amount, and, you know, we envision that it's not one, you know, consultant, but a team of consultants who would look at the, you know, the engineering aspects, the natural resource aspects, hydrology, so, you know, would be a consulting team. It could be, you know, with, with several contractors perhaps, or it could be a larger firm who has that in-house capability.
Any other, any other questions or comments? I, I have one. Is there a time, a timeline for this right now? I see the tasks listed out, but I see no sort of-
Okay, well, we've been told that it will be about a two-year process, and we're hoping to gear up with the funding. And a lot of it depends on whether we get all the funding together in time, but we're looking at starting up by, um, July 1st in a two-year process from there. And, um, you know, we've, we've identified, you know, a certain number of public meetings that will have to be held within that timeframe and, and so forth. And, um, apparently that arrangement has been kind of viewed, reviewed with DES, and they're in agreement with that timeframe for coming forward with this feasibility study.
One, one other question. So you didn't get the American Rivers Grant, which is $50,000.
That's correct.
And you said there's another grant you're applying for?
Another grant we just applied for.
Just applied for. Does that cover the $50,000?
Also $50,000. Right, so, I mean, our hope was we would get either the Rivers Grant, which we didn't get, or this Gulf of Maine Grant, which is currently, um, being considered. We're also gearing up to do additional grant writing if we have to. I mean, there's limited funding available these days, and so you need to be really aggressive in, in going forward and pursuing those funding sources.
So nothing happens until you get the grants, basically?
We won't be hiring anyone until we get the grants, but, you know, our committee is, is gearing up. We're working on the requests for proposals and, you know, and these are all soft costs that are counted towards the match for the project. The, um, engineering study that Wright Pierce did two years ago, or three years ago at this point, that's considered as match for some of these grants. So, um, so at this point, that's, that's where we are. And, um, we'd appreciate, you know, any, any other feedback, if, if you'd like us to take, go off in a little different direction.
Council Branch has feedback.
No, I'm, it's, it's my understanding that, that Exeter has just gone through-
Yes.
-the study, and my question is, um, in reference to the RFP, are we utilize, have we talked to Exeter to give some input on how they set it up and-
We haven't talked to them, but we have a copy of their request for proposals, and the committee liked the Exeter RFP, and we're using that as the model to, from which we're, you know, fine tuning it and tailoring it to new markets' needs. But I think, you know, at some point, we're just still in the organizational, um, phase of this, but I think we, as we go through the process, we would like to include some other people, other, um, project partners from the state, fishing game. And I know the people from the Exeter River, um, Watershed Association have expressed interest in, in coming and working with us. They've always been very supportive in our endeavors in a similar vein, so. Definitely, there's some good resources out there, and we're going to be, you know, working with as many people as, as we can to make this a really, you know, comprehensive study that will really get at the heart of some of the issues that need to be addressed and looked at.
Diane, did, has Exeter hired a consultant yet?
Yes, they have.
And if they did, do we know what they're paying out?
That's a good question. We've asked the question of Deb Luzell from the state, and she hasn't gotten back to me, but I, they did hire Vanessa Hangan, Consultants VHB, to do the study. And I thought it was in the, she, I, she said $80,000 or $90,000 range, perhaps. If you'd like me to get definitive information on that, I can. It's just a range.
If you could, only because it could give us, you know, we could be close to our point of where we've got the funding to do it.
That we can go forward, right.
Okay, I'll say thank you.
His first question of his tenure. Council Carmichael.
Yes, I was going to ask basically the same question as far as have we checked with Exeter, who they're using for consulting. And my other question would be, um, who does our grant writing?
I, this particular grant, I've been working with Deb Luzell. Of course, when Ms. Glover was here, she, we worked as a team together with, um, with Ms. Luzell for the grant writing. I think, you know, departments within the town do their own grant writing. I've done, you know, several grants for the pedestrian bridge project and, um, some other grants for planning board-related stuff.
Thank you.
But I think it's up to each department to do their own grant writing, pretty much.
Council Bentley.
Good job, good update. Uh, just one comment. Milford has also looked at two, and I spoke a year ago to the Milford Town Manager. He was very willing to talk and offer any info. And, um, I still think it would be interesting so, to talk to Exeter who's going through it and Milford who's going through it. Still think it would be interesting to talk to some folks in Greenland who've already done it.
Yep.
And, um, because I've spoken to some that this, that I bumped into. And it would be neat to hear another perspective, too. We thought this and blank happened, and just, just to have another before, middle, and after.
Maybe as part of this process, we could have a public forum and invite people from all, you know, the three communities that I, this is the fourth one, Merrimack has gone through it, and hear their perspective, pros and cons, and how they dealt with it. I think that would be a very useful-
Thank you.
-exercise. Thank you, Mr. Bentley.
Council Levy.
This probably won't work, but I figured I'd ask anyway. If they're doing it in Exeter, is there any way that we could piggyback with them and, and they could combine the study? Is it worth asking the question?
It's, it's a good question to ask. I think they're a little bit further ahead along than we are, probably by three or four months. I can ask the question, but-
I mean, maybe the contractor with another, if, I'm just saying if we threw another 50 grand at them and maybe they could. I don't know if there's any economy of scale there. I just thought I'd ask, so.
No, it's a good point. Fear of the question.
Yep, if it's-
I think logistically, it might be a little difficult, because we really want to try to tailor this for New Market and the needs and the interests of New Market.
Well, no, I wouldn't want them not to. What I'm saying is if they're doing it, you know, you may want to just ask. There's no harm in it. All they can say is, it's not going to work.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Bruce Hardy? Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Thank you for the update. Back to, oh-
Ed wanted me to touch upon the pedestrian bridge project. Did you want me to do that right now?
She's there.
Or shall we wait? I'm sorry.
Nope, go ahead.
Okay, as some of you know, the town received a grant from the New Hampshire Department of Transportation for a $440,000 grant for a pedestrian bridge in the downtown. And the total project cost was, uh, $560,000. And we've gone through a request for, uh, qualifications process. We received four proposals from four engineering consultants, and we've selected Duboy King, um, to work with us on this project. And we have a meeting tomorrow. We're going to start negotiating with them on a scope of service and to, uh, move forward with the engineering. As part of this process, the Department of Transportation has, uh, done an independent cost estimate for us on what the engineering costs would be. And it turns out that the budget that was originally included was much lower than, um, what is realistically needed to do the engineering. There's some new, uh, federal requirements, and you have to go through competitive bidding and have detailed, um, specifications and plans and so forth. So we've, um, we, we received an additional allocation from the Department of Transportation for another $80,000. And, um, of course, the town has to match the monies that we received. And in the original proposal, the match was $110,000, and that was to be shared between the town of New Market and Mr. Chinburg, because this was a public-private partnership affiliated with that project. And, um, in last year's budgets, my understanding that the $55,000 was appropriated as part of the downtown, um, TIF, and, um, Mr. Angel was referring to, that fund earlier that is in the process of being closed out. But what we need to do is, we need to, uh, encumber those funds that we have already appropriated before the fund is closed, obviously. And, um, we're also going to be coming forward with a request to come up with a shortfall for the engineering and, um, with a proposal to utilize funding through the, um, transportation and municipal transportation improvement fund, which is one of our capital reserve funds. And there's currently $300,000 approximately in that account, which is, um, available, that can be spent on eligible projects upon approval by the town council after public hearing. And I wanted to just mention that to you, that that's something that will be coming in, in probably April. And we're, you know, we need to encumber those funds before, obviously, the, the downtown enhancement fund is closed out so that we can, can get that project moving forward. And I, I wanted to give you an update on that. Are there any questions on that?
You do. Council Carmichael.
Yes, uh, question. Where exactly is it going?
It is going at the, on Main Street, okay? At the southwestern corner of the foundation of the old mill building, across from, I forget which, which building number it is.
Riverdale Auto there.
Be right across.
Right across from N1, I think, is the building number.
Does it go right into the other building, or does it just come right down?
It's going, they're going to actually build a tower, and it will cross the street. And eventually, the plan is that the tower would tie into, and this is, you know, long-range plan, would tie into some kind of parking structure, um, you know, that would provide parking. But, um, for the time being, it would be a freestanding, I say freestanding, but there would be a structure and it would, you know, cross the street, and it would, so it's going to require some, um, structural engineering and bridge design in order to make it feasible. And I think maybe that was underestimated in the original proposal that went forward.
Council Branch.
Diane, just for I'm clear, the additional engineering money that you spoke of, the state is willing to give 80, but-
Yes.
Be matched, so are we looking at a 40-40 match, or?
No, I'm sorry. It's, the town had, the, the local match is 20%. And it comes down to about $8,500 for the town and $8,500 for, for Chinburg. Yeah, oh, yeah, we don't have to come up with the full hundred, $80,000, no. They're going to give us $80,000, which is-
Well, no, I, I just thought-
To increase our budget.
You know, we had to come up with a match on the 80, because that's what I was concerned about. Thank you.
Just a portion of the match, right. Okay.
Any other, any other questions or comments? I, I can only say that as someone that drives multiple times down that road, people are turning that into a non-crosswalk crosswalk right now. So right in between the two crosswalks, where the bridge is going to be, people will have to cross right there. So hopefully they'll be, get that up as soon as possible. Make it safer for everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, yes.
So with the council's lead, we will go back to interim finance director.
All right, technical difficulty solved. All right, again, uh, I'm Matt Angel. I'm the acting finance director. All right, uh, just a quick overview for those of you who don't know how the tax rate is set. Basically, you start out with the appropriations that are appropriated at town meeting. For the 2011 tax rate, it's $10,750,000. And that number is detailed out on an MS2, I'm, sorry, MS2 form that's sent to the DRA. DRA. Okay? The next line is the MS four, which details out the revenues. The revenues would be motor vehicle excise permits, building permits, anything that doesn't deal with the tax rate. And the MS four that was sent into the state totaled five million, seven hundred and fifty-two, fifty-three thousand dollars. That MS four is where a lot of the mistakes were made. Okay? Then we add in overlay war service credits to come up with the net amount that has to be raised through taxation. All right? The next number down is the total valuation for the town. Now, to answer Councilor Levy's question from earlier, if the downtown TIF assessed value is included in that assessed valuation number, right now, it's not included. All right? The tax rate would go down. You see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, now, what I previously reported was, is that the tax rate had total errors of four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars. But since my last report, I found an additional error for a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. Basically, it goes the opposite direction. So the net revenue shortfall is now two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, a hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And we're going to expect, basically, it's now been closed because of that reduction. And it's being closed through freezing of expenditure lines and then revenues, non-tax revenues, coming in excess of budget. So let me go through some of the lines. The first, these are the different lines that were on the MS four. The first one was a DES grant that should have been credited to the wastewater fund, but actually was credited to the general fund. And that ended up lowering the tax rate. Also, there was dispatch receipts in the local, the departmental revenue for a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then this, I'm sorry, then there was a double up of solid waste and recreation revenues on the MS four. And then, this is the new one, where the downtown TIF revenues were not offset on the MS four. Okay? Basically, what happened was the, the captured value for the, or the increment value of the downtown TIF, that's what's being applied to the tax rate and being transferred into the fund. That amount is eighty-five thousand dollars for 2012, fiscal year 2012, but 2011 tax year. What happened, on the MS four form, you have to put in a revenue to offset your appropriations so that there's no impact to the tax rate. That number unfortunately was reported incorrectly. Remember my first presentation? There were two numbers on the MS four that I did not know what they were. I now know what one of them is. And it's twelve thousand, two hundred dollars. Basically, that's a typo. That should have been like a hundred and twenty-one thousand. But in reality, it should have been a hundred and seventy thousand. Okay. Let's look at some of the details behind the revenue shortfall. You have the DES grant. Now, this is a payment schedule from DES. We're going to get, if you look at the far right-hand column under the total, we're going to get that annually. And for 2012, twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars should be a revenue to the wastewater fund. Okay? Next year, it's going to be twenty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine. Now, on the MS four, this is the MS four that was used to set the tax rate. You can see, I blocked out the wastewater grant, okay? And the DRA put in a modification for twenty-one thousand, eight thirty-four. However, they did not back it out of the sewer revenues. So as a result, it overinflated revenues for the general fund. Okay? This is the, just to kind of detail out, the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from, that deals with the dispatch revenue. If you look at the left-hand column, two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, this is what makes up that two hundred and fourteen thousand. And in there, you can see the hundred and twenty-five thousand. And we all know that the town's not going to receive the hundred and twenty-five thousand. Okay. Again, in that same line, there's an adjustment the DRA made for two hundred and sixty-three thousand. Basically, the DRA was looking at two MS forms that were completed differently. One didn't equal the other. So they raised the question, what is this? And they increased it by two hundred and sixty-three thousand for the solid waste and recreation fund. But if you look down, there's, there's an arrow pointing, that someone had written in, there's four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-six. That number right there is the solid waste and recreation fund. So essentially, it double counted those revenues. This is the, the one that I just realized what it was. The twelve thousand, two hundred dollars should have been a hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. And basically, what this would have done is increased the revenues and lowered the, basically, it would essentially lowered the tax rate. Now, because the revenues are generated through the increment, eighty-five thousand, and I moved that in, that hundred and seventy thousand minus twelve thousand was raised by the taxpayers at general. And it resides right now in the general fund. And this, by the way, closes the revenue shortfall. Just to kind of detail out what's left, I had fifteen thousand that I couldn't come up with and why. They put four hundred and twenty-nine thousand on the MS four. Essentially, I had two numbers for solid waste and recreation, which totaled four hundred and thirteen thousand. If you just kind of take the difference of four twenty-nine, it's fifteen thousand, eight nineteen. Just to rehash it, we are, the revenue shortfall is down now to two hundred and seventeen thousand. Hundred and five thousand dollars is coming from freezing of appropriations. And the rest comes from revenues exceeding the budget. And then also, if we look at continual assessments of expenditures and freeze those, as discussed earlier, it just results in increasing the town's fund balance at this point.
Matt, anything else before we go to questions?
No.
Councilor Levy.
Was there any part of that one oh five, I think was the last number you pulled up there, in freezing numbers, part of the two eighty-six?
No. No. That one oh five dealt...
Had nothing to do with it.
Nothing to do with it.
Good. And one other?
You're two more actually.
Now, I forgot. Oh. You talked about if the TIF didn't get closed, the tax rate would go up.
It would, it would remain high.
Yeah, I understand, which is the last thing I want. However, that being said, let's say we do, if we can legally do what you want to do, okay? However, that plays out. That means the water fund, CIP, or whatever the anachronism for it is, is going to be significantly depleted.
No.
You're not going to take...
That effect to that fund is zero.
So where does the five hundred thousand come from?
It comes from the water fund, which is Fund Twenty on the general ledger.
Yeah.
And then, basically, the town would write a check to the trustees at trust funds. In return, we would ask the trustees at trust funds for the money back. That's just the way New Hampshire wrote the system.
So wait a minute, wait a minute. You just took five hundred thousand dollars out of an account?
Took it out, yes. It would be, it would be a, it would be a transfer out of the water fund.
So the water fund would have five hundred thousand dollars less in it?
Yes.
Thank you.
But not CIP.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
So now, that water fund, I just want to know how this plays out. So there's no surprises to the people with water, you know, in town water. So that fund is called what? The water fund?
Just the water fund.
Okay.
And it just deals with the operations of water.
Okay. So now, there's an operational problem with water, that I'm assuming Sean uses that fund to do repairs and things of that nature?
Yes, but I have spoken previously with Sean. So when he was doing his presentation regarding the water main, he had in the back of his mind that I was going to take the five hundred and thirty-five thousand.
So what's in that fund now, Matt?
I believe it's about nine hundred thousand. I don't have the exact number in front of me.
So that will be reduced to four?
Yes.
That's all I was getting to.
Yep.
So just as long as everyone's cognizant of that, because, and that may be fine, you know? And then what we really should do is figure out what's in the CIP. Because the last thing I think people that are on town water want right now is to find out, you know, there's going to be another percentage increase and, I just don't want any more surprises.
Yeah.
You know?
This, this particular transfer, you know, I can't speak for what Sean says, but he, since he knows about it and it's included in his plan, it should not increase the water rates.
Okay.
Councilor LaBranch.
I'm almost certain that Sean has mentioned in the past that there's like two hundred thousand dollars a year that continues to go into that fund, you know, from the revenues that he gets in the water. Because the water rates are actually at a, at a rate that can sustain the, a lot of the water projects that we have on our, on our priority list. But it's my understanding that some of the capital reserve money is also built into the current fees that are assessed, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct. Any other comments?
No, I'm sorry, thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay.
So, well, no, I start.
Go ahead.
Sorry. I want to go off what Councilor Levy said.
Yep.
So we are taking five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from the water users, money that they paid for through water.
Yes.
That'll eventually end up in the general fund.
No.
Mm-mm.
No. There's a capital project out there for the Main Street.
Okay, so the general...
It's going to go into that.
The capital project for Main Street.
Yes. Which is the intent of the two thousand and eight...
Thousand and eight resolution.
Yes.
Got it. Okay, that makes sense.
Okay.
I feel like saying something out of total transparency for the last brief there.
Yes.
I actually had the advantage of five minutes before the meeting, getting called in and told about this number here. The way we closed the gap is that hundred and seventy thousand dollars of excess captured revenue, which means excess money that was charged to taxpayers that got brought into the town. So, correct?
Yes.
So we actually overcharged the residents of New Market a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And that has resulted in closing our...
Revenue shortfall.
Whoa, wait a minute.
Go ahead, Gary.
If that's the case, don't they get a credit?
No.
Aw, man.
No, you would have to include that in your budget, in your appropriation budget. That would go through the budget, budget process. It's not, it's not that the town has the authority to return it. And if it did, it wouldn't have the funds to do so.
I mean, people just got slammed.
What? I'm sorry, I don't want to cut you off.
No, it's just unbelievable.
Anyone else have a question? What does that turn into for a thousand dollars per valuation at a hundred and seventy thousand dollars?
I'm sorry?
Twenty-two cents, man.
Twenty-two cents?
Twenty-two cents.
Okay, I'm getting that from the gallery here, so. Twenty-two cents.
Is that right? Sound about right?
So...
So... You're the financial guy, you're supposed to...
So it's, it's not, it's...
It's different for every town.
So for a two hundred thousand dollar house, it's forty-four dollars?
Yes.
Okay. It's still forty-four dollars.
Yes.
We talked, but I just want to be totally transparent as to what that was. Any other comments, questions?
It is an unfortunate event that closed the revenue deficit, unfortunately, so.
And how did that happen?
It was another mistake on the MS four. They, basically, let me just kind of do this in a general discussion. There are only several ways in which the town can, can build up a fund balance. One is, is understate its revenues, thus increasing the tax rate. Another one is having appropriation term backs, where the departments aren't spending their money. Another one is, is overinflating your overlay. In the town's case here, the revenues were reported low, thus increasing the tax rate. You have to go back to that formula I used at the beginning of the presentation. So basically, if, if you take your gross appropriation, you report a lower local revenue figure. It increases the amount that's going to be raised by taxation. Okay? Since the hundred and seventy thousand was not reported on the MS four, it increased the amount that has to be raised by taxation.
Can I, can I try to put it in, Gary, in the last, last session, you used a lot of the hundred dollar figure. So let's say we needed a hundred dollars, right?
Yeah.
And we reported on the form that we were only getting ninety or seventy-five, so let's say seventy-five in. The rest has, the other twenty-five has to be captured by taxes. But now, we just found out we actually had eighty dollars that was coming in. So we, the difference is what we ended up overcharging individuals, which is a hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Yes.
It just seems like if there's a mistake made, it should be rectified. You know, I just...
Well, you know, on the flip side, there are mistakes going the other way that suggest the tax rate should increase.
Right.
Okay.
Revenue being down one oh one, twenty-five.
So I mean, this discussion comes, it's like a two-edged sword.
Any other questions?
It's more like a nine millimeter.
Yeah.
Councilor Bentley.
Just one thing, Matt. On the MS four, you said they, we, who?
What I mean by they is, is...
DAI, you said once?
Some, some of it is DAR, some of it is Scribner's error, some of it is just not understanding how the form went together. So it's a combination of a lot of things.
Any other questions? Matt, thank you very much for your job.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate all the work you're doing for the town. Next up, storm parking ban in Main Street and removal of trees. Director Malaski, this will be riveting.
What do you want to talk about first?
Trees. Let's get the trees out.
Trees first?
Trees.
All right, let's knock the trees out.
Be quick. We received three proposals. No one's going to certify those trees safe, being the size that they are. There's three trees in question. There was one tree discussed, but there's three trees that are pretty close proximity to the area in question. So no one's going to certify them safe. They're over a hundred feet. Got the three prices. Burke can be in there if he was told tomorrow. He could be in there in two weeks. He was the cheapest. We need to use a crane, going to lower them down on our side of the property line, down towards the public works. There is a large bee's nest in one of the trees, and there is a hole in the tree that the bees are living in there, so obviously, that's a problem. But we should take all three of them down and be done with it. The tree line item is overspent due to the storm from October, but we received a lot of funds from FEMA. Doesn't really go back to my account, but it's, comes back to the town, so.
Is that it?
That's it, really.
Any other questions?
Councilor Branch.
Rick, out of curiosity, could any of the three quotes do it quicker than two weeks?
Actually, yes. AccuCut, I spoke with him today, just to see what his schedule was. And he's actually doing a job tomorrow down on Exeter Road, and he's going to have a crane here. And even if he has to just get them down on our side for now, he's going to get those trees down. If, choose B, it's another four hundred dollars, but...
Okay.
Three fifty, I'm sorry.
Oh, actually, two... No, three fifty.
350, but he could do it actually tomorrow.
Even with the bees and stuff that's.
Even with the bees, they all know about the bees, and he could do it. He told me he would have it, he would have them trees down tomorrow if I called him and told him in the morning.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Bentley, or Vice Chairman, excuse me.
Just, uh, comment, question, comment. So the, the FEMA funds are like the 17,000 that you went and worked on and found additional money coming into us, so.
Yeah, I think it was 29.
Twenty, so that's great, you'd found that. So, just so people at home know, um, it's not going to change the budget because we actually gained some things, um, two weeks ago we were told about. But, you know, number one, Mr. Day came here on a Wednesday night, and I know by Friday you already had some things. So I appreciate getting it done, um, getting it looked at. And, and I say we just go forward with, um, getting it done, whether it's, whether you pay 350 more to gain two weeks, or, me myself, it was my house, I wouldn't pay the X 350 thinking most of the worst of the weather is over, anything that would topple it. But that being said, we could have some terrible wind tomorrow. And anyway, I think we need to go forward and get it done.
Counsel Levy.
There's no upside to this, but I, I'm going to read it anyway. Dawn came to us and he asked us to remove one tree. And I don't have a problem if these other trees aren't safe. But I guess I, I'd be remiss if I didn't ask, is there a precedent we're setting? You know, regarding removing trees? I can see if a tree is compromised, Rick, you know, um, he said there were critters in it, et cetera. I don't think the other trees are necessarily compromised by infestation like he was talking about with that. So I just, I'm, I'm just asking, you know, there's probably a fair amount of trees throughout town that are within, on town property along the road. Does this put us in a situation where we're going to have to be removing trees in other places? Just thought I'd ask.
If somebody brings something to our attention, depending on the situation, the biggest problem here is these trees are right underneath a mobile home, and no one will certify. You know, if it was a regular stick-built home, someone may certify them to a percentage. They give it a number, you know, 1 through 10, and obviously, they rate it. There's potential out there that, that could be something else.
Okay, I just thought I had to ask the question. As far as the timing, I would, I would honestly do the 1850, but that's because I think, I don't think two weeks is going to, my luck, there'll be a hurricane tomorrow, but. Dawn, I, I, I mean, you know, we want to help you, but, you know, I think a couple of weeks is, at this point, he's been. For years. I think he said, well, who said he brought this up six years ago?
Six years ago, the first certified letter was six years.
So I mean, you know, I don't.
Burke, Burke did say two weeks, like that's his worst case. He didn't, you know, he just, he wasn't going to definitely be there tomorrow. But there could be at least two weeks before he shows up.
That's my comment.
Any other comments or questions? Do we need some sort of a vote to let this happen, or is this just?
We can, if the council is agreeable, do the prices that we have, and absolutely Mr. Malaski to take care of it. We can just allow that to move forward on it.
Can we at least decide what we're going to spend?
If, if the council so wishes, yes.
So we usually don't have motions at this meeting, but if someone wants to make a motion, I will allow it. And Counsel Bentley.
In the essence of safety, um, to, I would make a motion, uh, safety that we make the motion tonight, not wait two weeks. We make a motion to get Burke's tree service to pay no more than 1850 to remove the three trees talked about, uh, within two weeks' time.
Second.
Is the motion in a second? Any discussion? Counsel, have your lights lit, is that just to make a motion? Any other discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Malaski, the vote.
Counsel Wright.
Aye.
Counsel Levy.
Aye.
Counsel Lebranche.
Aye.
Counsel Carmichael.
Aye.
Bentley.
Aye.
Chairman Azara.
Aye. Motion passes six to zero.
And that's Burke.
That is Burke, 1850.
All right.
Main Street parking.
Yes, I.
For the snowy winter.
I provided a memo to kind of give how we do things down there. We roll it over to the east side. It opens up one side, it's the bulk of the side with the businesses, and then we punch holes for the few businesses and walkways that are on the east side. But it sits there for a day, and we come in the following eve, night and remove it. The issue is people still attempt to park where there's really no room for parking. I spoke with the police chief, and the suggestion is we throw up temporary signage in the snowbank, just plastic corrugated signs there, not very expensive to be, have made. It wouldn't be, uh, we would go throw them up after we roll it. So for one day, there'd be no parking on the east side. And, uh, we'd pick up the snow. It takes us about a night to get that section done, so. And that's, that's basically the best way for us to deal with it, and.
Uh, Vice Chairman Bentley.
Again, Mr., you know, again, quick work. Mr. Sensu, you've already, two weeks ago, I know you were on it right off because I saw the first memo. Um, what some of the other towns do, it sounds like we have a plan, Chief Sears, and you have spoken. But what a lot of our, the other towns near us do is they put it on their marquees. You see it on TV flashing below, you, you hear it on the radio, local radio station. So I would say, go cheap, get the orange cones, but do everything. Because the first couple of people that get towed, there's going to be, you know, but as long as we do due diligence to make sure they know by putting it on the board out front, by having it on MUR, by having it on the local radios, um, you know, the east side, no parking Thursday night, and the, you know, um, I just, I think it's a good idea. I think we need to do it, it was, it was, uh, brought up by a citizen, and I think it's good to, to do it.
No, it, it, it should be for one day, you know, one business day on that side. And there are a couple of businesses that get upset because we put it all on that side, but there's only a couple on that side. And, uh, I mean, we have a couple new ones up at the mill, but they, they're, they're, there's no parking up there, so their walkway's open. But, uh, it's, it's the way we have to do things down there, and.
Counsel Levy.
Rick, once all this parking is, and, and I could be off here, but once the parking is all, um, established behind Riverdale and whatnot, I don't know if they're using all that now, but once that gets done, that should, um, rectify or take some of the pressure off, right?
No, the issue's actually down this end.
So that, oh, I see.
From the legion to the, to the bandstand.
Okay, but if they had to for one day walk a little further, they, is there parking available up there? That's, that was really what the.
The water street parking lot is relatively empty.
Oh, so they can use that? Okay. So as long as people know that, I think, good.
Any other comments? Rick, thank you so much. I to, totally agree with what Vice Chairman said, that it's quick work, and I think it's a great solution. And I absolutely echo the idea of using local media to get out the information as much as possible as well. Thanks, Rick. Thank you. Item number five, NBA benches and trash receptacles. Mike Hoffman.
Hi, thank you. This all started, Mike Hoffman, with the NBA. This all started with a, uh, chain of emails about, uh, the benches and, uh, trash receptacles being put out for the Great Bay half. Each year we have the Great Bay half about the first week of April. And, uh, sometimes because of weather, people are forced to sit on the curb to eat pizza or drink coffee. And what we at the Business Association would like to do is to extend the season for the benches and the trash receptacles. And along with that, also the tables and chairs. The tables and chairs are not permitted, uh, by the zoning from, um, April 1st until November for, or, uh, anytime before April 1st, or anytime after November 1st. And as you see me in my Hawaiian shirt, it's warmer outside right now than it was, is in. It's 82 degrees today, but tables are not permitted outside. Of course, if you go up and down Main Street, you'll also see that, uh, the code enforcement officer hasn't been out there except for maybe hopefully to buy an ice cream, um, as many people were. So what we'd like to do is to extend the, uh, season for the sidewalk furnishings, uh, by about a month, weather permitting, uh, to make it to March 1st. And then the other end of the, uh, year, six weeks out, so it's December 15th. Now, all of the furnishings that are owned by businesses are taken up every night. And if it's snowing, they're not going to put them out. They just, they just, no, that's, that doesn't help them out. Uh, the, and the other piece of it is that the, uh, the town-owned property, the benches and the trash cans and, uh, recycling receptacles, uh, those tend to follow the same schedule. And as I made an email round, uh, you've heard from Director Malaski, and he actually already had everything on the trailer ready to go, and then we had one last snowfall. So he was on top of it, but it would, we'd like to see them stay out a little bit further. It's amazing how much trash we get all winter long. The trash cans gone, and as soon as they're gone, one piece of trash, and there's another and another, and it's, it's unbelievable. And I, uh, did bring a couple photographs just to, uh, if one passed around. Just, it's, it's an accolade to what was down, done downtown five years, five years ago before the project and today. And it's unbelievable, the difference, it really is. And we're seeing it with, uh, the pedestrian traffic. And we'd just like to extend that pedestrian traffic and welcome it. I think it brings a sense of community to the downtown, um, and I think it's good for the, great for the town.
Uh, Counsel Lebranche.
Having been here when we originally discussed this, uh, we pretty much went with the ordinance to read for, um, when the parking ban was in effect, if I'm not mistaken, overnight parking. I know, you know, through just going down there, that at this time of year, there is a lot of traffic down there. And I don't really see where there's an issue, especially if, if the people are going to take the, um, tables and chairs in at night. You know, if, if Rick knows, for example, that we're going to allow him to do it, uh, say, March 20th, which is the first day of spring, if, if he knows that that's the first day that we're, we're able to do this, then hopefully he can get out there and get the street swept with the machine and everything the day prior so that this, you know, the benches and everything aren't in the way. I'd be a little nervous going into December only because of our nice October 30th storm that we had this past year. But once again, as long as, as the storefront owners are aware, um, uh, that, you know, they have to have this stuff off the sidewalk, in, in particular if there is a storm, um, you know, and even icing situations, which require them to go and put down sand and stuff. I don't have a problem with it, and I, I assume we're still getting our, um, yearly fees for the businesses to put them out there, so it's a revenue maker for the town, however small it is. It's still bringing in a little bit of money for the town, so.
It's double what Durham's is.
Well, it's, it's better Main Street.
Right, that's true.
So, you know, from my perspective, I don't have a problem with it, and, and I think that it can entice more people to, to go downtown. Even on, you know, especially on the weekends, especially when you have nice weekends like, you know, we've had in the past. So I fully support this.
Counsel Bentley.
I echo that. Uh, I know some folks last night, they wanted to eat outside, and they went to the Holy Grail because they're, they have seating outside in Epping last night. So, um, were they able to go to the tavern or one of the other places that has seating? You know, maybe they'd have kept those tax dollars, those people in, in, you know, I totally support it. If, if Mr. Malaski's on board, you know, that's the biggest thing. It sounds like we have already spoken to him, and that, you know, they'll take the chairs and tables in so that, you know, we can get the, you know, let them do their business. But I agree to extending it to, you know, whatever we think is reasonable. I think we need to do everything in the world, we've said it, many of us have made, everything in the world to any business in this town, and it's a pretty simple thing, I think, to, to get some more, um, people down there.
Any other comments? So it's an ordinance that required, that has set this?
Your ordinance sets the April 1st to November 1st.
So we will have, would we have to have a new ordinance to, or can we rescind that ordinance, and then?
We can amend, amend the ordinance too. Yes, easy enough.
Two weeks from now.
Okay. Can we add that to the agenda? It's not going to do a minute good right now, because in our next meeting will be after April anyway, but.
It's all right, they're all out there anyway.
Right. I just got to say that, but I just, I won't.
Almost, actually, not, not all of them. And I, yeah, quite honestly, I wouldn't be opposed to a requirement stating that the, any, uh, business-owned furnishings has to come in at night, because, uh, almost everybody does. But I, I, honestly, there's one that doesn't. They just lock them up on, uh, and I don't think that looks good personally. I think it, I think they should be brought in every night.
Great.
Add that to the amendment.
Yeah, well, we'll discuss it in two weeks.
We need him to come back, we don't need him to come back in two weeks.
No, we don't.
But let's, let's, can we at least pin a date, then? What are we talking about? Are we talking November 1st? Are we talking?
Well, I think we should just have that conversation.
Okay, I didn't know if, I didn't know if he had a, Mr. Hoffman had a suggestion.
He's giving his input, right?
Yeah. It's my, my opinion is leave them up, leave them out all year round. I mean, quite frankly, with the, I understand this difficulty with snow removal, there really are. But very, very few communities pull in their park benches and trash cans every winter. And, uh, it, you know, we just go one town north, and they don't. And it is nice, because, um, as one, one person said, we're hardy souls, we'll have a hot chocolate out here in the middle of winter on the park bench. And that, you know, would be nice. Maybe if only the trash cans were picked up, or maybe just, some of them, just leave a couple out so that some people could gather in the winter, because, you know, we do have beautiful days in January. Actually, this year, whole year was beautiful. So, thank you.
Hold on, Lord. Questions, we get questions. Counsel Lebranche.
Well, no, it's not a question. I'm just thinking that if we're going to bring an ordinance at the next meeting, we should have established what we want to add to it. So I would recommend that we went with maybe a March 15th open date, and.
November 1st.
I'd go December 1st for a closed date. I mean, you know, that's subject for discussion, but that's, that's what I, I would recommend. But, you know, also including the fact that they need to be removed when the business is closed. They cannot be on the Main Street when the business is closed. I think that would cover the, keeping it out overnight or anything.
Any comments? So it's March, so it's the March 15th to December 1st?
December 1st.
With businesses having to take it in at night as part of that. Uh, Counsel Carmichael.
I like, I like. I like the March 1st to November 1st.
To November 1st?
Yeah, just, uh, basically what you, because right now it's April 1st to, uh, November 1st. He's talking about nice warm weather, and you're right, we, like Counselor Bentley said, you know, we want, we want business here. People walking away. I mean, if they're willing to put it out there, and if Rick's willing to, uh, you know, pick up the trash, I mean, why not do it? That's my comment.
Uh, Town Minister, you were going to say something?
I, I was going to say that, um, one of the things, I don't think we bring the chairs in, tables and chairs enduring from April 1st to November 1st, do we?
Uh, they're typically April.
Put against the side of the building.
It's right around April, you're talking about the, the town benches?
Currently, the way it is, is when the tables go out from April 1st to November 1st, they stay out, and they're just located next to the building, whereas if we're going to go a longer period of time, we're talking about possibly removing them if we have snow and things like that.
Are we talking about the town-owned ones or the business-owned ones?
The, the town-owned, I mean, the business ones.
Yeah, the business ones, I think that what we'll find is anytime there's any snow, they're not going to be out. People, they're just respectful of the need for snow removal equipment. I, I think we could actually go year-round. They could be out, and nobody's going to put them out if it's raining, pouring, snowing. And, uh, you know, there's, it's, um, and if they're taking them in every single night, most of the snow removal, they do attempt to do a lot of snow removal in the evening, in the middle of the night.
Right.
You know, certainly when the snow is coming down heavy during the day, they're out there with the sidewalk plow. But nobody would be putting any tables out there during that type of weather. So I, it almost seems as if, um, the time of the year shouldn't, maybe it's just an annual permit, and if it's a beautiful day in December or January, um, why not? You know, but in, and conversely, if it snows in October, which it can happen, um, you know, they'll, they won't be out.
Counsel Levy.
Not to belabor this subject, but, but if, if it's, if the weather is nice during the day, for sake of argument, and then we get a storm at night, and the tables are left out there, and they're trying to clear the, the streets, what then?
Well, they shouldn't be left out there by the ordinance.
What I'm saying is if you're going to take them, you should either make it so they take them out, because if the day's fine, great. But then if they're trying, you know, if somebody leaves, you know, they close their business at 6:00 or 7:00 for whatever reason, and we get six inches or eight inches, and they're trying to go around this stuff, they're going to go, you know, they're going to damage stuff, they're going to be agitated. It's not, I, I would say, you know, take it, take them in if you're going to do it in the wintertime, because otherwise, it's not, it's not feared of DPW, it's not feared of anybody.
No, and, and nobody really, there's, as I said, there's, everybody does bring, because they don't want them stolen. Everybody brings them in at night, and, uh, that, there is.
So if we, if we put that in the provision, I think we'd be fine. I would do that.
Town Minister.
Well, I was just going to, you know, echo what Counsel Levy said. I mean, a few weeks ago, we were supposed to have a storm that was going to draw dust to it maybe an inch, and we ended up in Newmarket almost having 10 inches of snow overnight. And if the tables are out, they don't, they do, they create a, a problem for the guys. And I'm, I guess from April 1st, we know we rarely ever get any type of major snow, you know. I remember one year we did, um, we got a pretty big snowstorm. But it seems to be safe that, you know, from April 1st to November 1st, we're sort of in that area that, you know, if they're left, if up against the building, they're okay, but outside that area, it's, you know, any, any man's call.
Well, then they are required to always have a four-foot path, which the snowplow, I believe, is a four-foot, maybe it's a five-foot, but, uh, it's, there's always plenty of room on the sidewalk, there really is, and we want it. the sidewalk, there really is, and we want it that way.
Counsel Wright.
Yes, about year-round, off the street at night.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's the perfect solution. And of course, it'd be off the street anytime there's snow, inclement weather.
Are you done?
Yeah.
I, before I let, my first time, I totally agree. Year-round, and if you don't comply with the ordinance and you don't take them in at night, then, then we have fine situations.
In the, in the, the snowplow.
Oh, man, I don't know about that.
Counsel Lebranche.
No, that's exactly what I was going to suggest. I'm good with that. Year-round, it's got to be off the street at night.
Is everyone sort of consensus?
I guess just the, and if not then, and I doubt it would happen, but we can say that, but the one night that it does, because my cook, you know, the waitress went home sick and this, and they, and now Rick's down there, October 27th, like last year, big snowstorm, and it didn't happen. There's going to be some type of a.
Make them reapply.
Or they lose them, or they pay an hour of Rick's time. I doubt it would happen, but I just, the one time it does, and then we're saying, you know, be fiscally responsible, Rick, why just spend an hour moving stuff down there? Because, you know, I just think there has to be something on the what-if. You know, a fine, or a, or you pay whatever, you know, an hour of the DPW labor or whatever. But year-round's fine, we need to work with them and go and put this to sleep, but.
Any other comments?
Totally agree with having some sort of stick with the carrot, and have some sort of fine to ensure, add some incentive.
Mike, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Next, Town Council to consider appointments by committees, two committees and commissions. Counselor Levy.
I just, and I brought it up to you earlier, I think. My question was, I actually got a call from someone that was interested in one of these, and they said, I thought they were May termination or, you know, expiration dates. And I think that's what they had usually been, so I was wondering why it wasn't May. That's basically my question. Because I don't think everybody knew that. I, you know, I think, I certainly didn't know.
When, when the charter was changed, everything followed the date of the meeting. So therefore, the elections take place in, in March of this year, and subsequently will fall, follow March. So therefore, all the boards and committees follow the same suit.
Okay. I mean, it would have been nice if that had been, you know, told to people, because I don't think they really.
No, we discussed that. We discussed that, that everybody, everybody's term would come up in, in March of each year. So is, is those of you who were elected last May, you know, your term's going to be shorter.
No, I understood it applied to the council, and I understood it applied, obviously, to the school and the vote on, I knew all that. I didn't think it, I didn't know it applied to the, to the terms. So, anyway, that's what I. I don't know that it, did it actually state that? I mean, do we have that in writing?
You'll have to go back and look at what they.
Because I don't think it did.
Yeah, I was looking for the charter on my laptop, and it doesn't seem to be there. So I'm going to, I agree, I didn't realize it was affecting the commissions and committees as well. I understand that would, but I, I just didn't, I picked up on the council, but not on the committees. I will allow it.
Do you have to look at the resolutions pertaining to each board and committee to see how the language of the resolution is written? Because you might have to change the resolution before you can just arbitrarily change appointing people. And were these positions all posted two weeks ahead of time at the necessary areas for people to know that they, because we went through this before for appointments, that people would know about it through the necessary avenue so that they could apply in a timely fashion to have their name considered? And I don't know that that's been done, because there's a lot of confusion about it. And like I said, the resolutions, I think, state certain dates, so you might have to change those before you can change it like this.
Name an address.
Roseanne Quox, 332 Wally Falls Road. She knows me.
Just in closing, that was my issue.
Yeah.
I don't think people knew.
For this administrator, do we know where these posted, two weeks?
I, what I can tell you is that if there are vacancies here, they've been posted year-round on the town's website, in the, on the marquee, always, you know, inviting people to join the committees. As to members whose membership would have lapsed in, in May and today, I, I can't answer that question, I have to ask Kathy. I'll find you that answer.
I, I can answer that. I got, because my name's on this list for the Royal Trust, and I was certified by Kathy. And I did see, at least for the ZBA, I saw it on the marquee.
Yeah.
It is, well, hold on, any, any other comments on this? The resolution question is an interesting one.
I'll look it up. Made a note on that.
Do we have to vote on these tonight, seeing that their official terms initially?
Is May?
Were through May? Does that allow us the leeway to vote on this in the business meeting in April? Or the workshop in April?
Yes. You know, I mean, we just figure it all out and come back, and the council can do the right thing, whatever that may be.
Does anyone have an issue with that or a concern with that? Seems like the fair thing to do.
Yes.
Thank you.
Meeting just got a lot shorter. Counsel Bentley, Vice Chairman Bentley.
Which one?
Yeah, the next meeting got a lot longer.
This one, I was reviewing it, now I lost it. One of the gentlemen didn't put what he was putting in for, so if we can, I'll try to find it. It's just one of the people that put in for something, it doesn't say, it has a date and everything else, but Jeffrey Gallnoff, Ash Whomprow, current.
What page?
37. Never says what he's putting in for, and it's in between a conservation one and a not conservation one, so.
Can we just, anyway. Mr. Minister, can we just make sure that in the next packet, they're all clean? Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Levy, for bringing that up. Item 7, review of minutes from standing committees and council. The planning board was Vice Chairman Botterman, ex-Counsel Botterman.
We just had a planning board, Ed was here last night.
Did you go to the meeting last night?
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to thank everybody for nominating me. Set up to me. I have an email at three in the afternoon. Welcome to the club.
That's funny. So how was the meeting?
It was excellent. Excellent. Val Shelton is the new chair, and Peter Roy is the vice chair. An excellent, excellent board.
Black Bear and Highway Public Safety, there was no Highway Public Safety meeting. There was a meeting for Black Bear, I have not seen the minutes yet. I was at the Town Minister's Search Committee meeting at the same time for that one. So I will give you those minutes, you weren't up there, okay. I will get the minutes and report next workshop on it. Conservation Commission, the tree warden is not, is not with us. So if everyone's okay with that, after this, we'll discuss appointments to committees after this, for the new committees. CIP.
Still no meeting. We probably won't get started until, my guess is, August or September, probably.
Counselor Zink is not here for Budget Committee. I'm assuming there wasn't a Budget Committee meeting in the last two days. Counsel Levy.
No advisory.
No Advisory Heritage and Energy Committee.
There's been no energy meeting, and we still looking for members. One has contacted me recently. One's ill and one is out of state, and going to be out of state for a long, a lot longer than he thought. So there's only two people. So anyone wanting to get on the Energy Committee, they'll contact me. But we haven't had a meeting in quite some time.
So discussing committee appointments for the, for the next, for this coming session, obviously Counsel Levy and Counsel Carmichael are already on the Budget and Planning Committee. I'd like to leave people where they are to continue, so Counsel Lebranche on the CIP, myself on Black Bear, Vice Chairman on Energy. That would leave the Advisory Heritage Commission open and the Conservation Commission open as the only two committees that are left open. Right now, I have it slated with, and please let me know what you think, Counsel Wright. Counsel Wright going to the Conservation Commission, would that be all right with you? And then we'll have Counsel Zink go to the Advisory Heritage Committee.
Can I just make one quick?
Yes, go ahead, Counsel Levy.
Just, someone had called me regarding Black Bear and the council, and I just thought I would, I'd let you know, and it probably may not have been clear, but I don't think our rep has a vote. And someone said, you know, and I'm not trying to.
Yeah, no, totally.
I think, I think there was a meeting where you seconded the minutes or something, and they said to me, I don't think.
I might have, that's true.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not criticizing, I just thought you should be aware that we don't, we actually don't have, by RSA, I think it's three people from New Road. I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure. And then there's two people, one from the NCDC and one from the planning board with actual votes. So I just wanted to make aware whomever it was going to be this year. Should be aware of that.
Those minutes are now invalid.
Well, you know, I didn't, I didn't want to, you know, I just, I thought we should know, you know.
No, no problem, great, I appreciate it, thank you. Item 8, old or new business? Anyone have old or new business to bring up?
Counsel Lebranche.
Just a couple of things. Search Committee is looking for approval to send out first set of rejection letters in probably, what, two weeks, two and a half weeks, which will involve some mailing costs, some paper costs, some envelopes costs. Would like to be able to use perhaps Town Hall stationery if we could, and Newmarket envelopes, and Newmarket postage. So there's 50 applicants, maybe, you know, it's probably going to, so at the most, you're going to get, like I say, 50 stamps that we're going to need. So I'm thinking the cost would be fairly minimal, but I just want to get approval before the committee starts to send these letters out.
Do we need motion approval or just general consensus for that?
Just consensus.
Anyone have an issue with us?
Just want to be sure that we're good to go.
I know this is dumb, but is email totally, I know it's probably inappropriate. I had to ask.
Yeah, no, I, we've kind of decided we'd like to go out, we've actually got a draft of a letter to go out on the first wave.
You know what I might suggest, just in the spirit of not spending much on a registered letter or whatever, just so they know they got it, you might want to back it up with an email. You know, just so everybody knows, unless you were going to send out registered letters, which could get more costly.
No, I think all we were going to do is send out letters and, and keep a copy of the letter with the, with the actual application and put it in the file.
Okay.
So if anyone ever asked, it was like, you know, we did send it to this address.
Yeah, I think the discussion that was had is that based on the level of the position, that it seems appropriate to send post mail as opposed to email.
Okay.
Could you actually get, a, an update on the, on the status of the committee? Or the, whatever it is.
Yeah, at this point, like I said, I believe we've got maybe 47, 48 applicants. We've already, as a committee, have evaluated 40 of them, probably. And we've got scores on them, and we will be doing another wave of scoring by next Wednesday, the 28th, figuring that it closes on the 30th. So if we get a couple of more, we can do those at the last minute, and not a big deal. Scheduled to meet again on April 2nd, I believe it is, if that's that first Monday meeting, and that'll be a non-public session, because we will be discussing person, people that have applied, and that's where we'll probably come up with that first wave of the rejection letters. And that's pretty much where we're at at this point.
Yeah, but before, like, just to give a little, a little more color to it, too, I think everyone in the committee's done an amazing job of establishing a rubric with strict set criteria and saying what the measurement of that criteria is, so that everyone is looking at this from a very objective, looking through the resumes and cover letters and just, and assessing it objectively, so that, that made her drop her paper. So, so that, and I really think it's, it's going to make it, it's going to expedite the process by, especially for the first round, where we can all get together and assume anyone below a certain cutoff score. When you aggregate all, all of it, will just be in the first round of, you know, thank you very much for your time, but, but we're going with someone else. It's definitely going to allow the process to move forward quicker than it might have if we had to sit around talking about 48 to 50 resumes.
We in old or new? I can't, I never, I don't do.
Oh, is this new, this is not talking about this?
No, no, it's, it's, are we in old and new business now?
We are, but if, if it's not talking about the Administrator Search Committee, then I'm going to let him finish because I think.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize, go ahead.
Do you have something else?
I just, one other thing, I just wanted to make sure that we're all set with our postings and everything for our April 4th meeting, to make sure that we don't miss anything on this wave, because I know there is a time restraint on this thing, so.
Those things have been out the day after the town meeting.
Okay, so, so it has been posted in the newspapers already?
It will be this Friday.
This Friday, okay.
I saw the school today, some posters.
Counsel Bentley, then Counsel Levy.
Well, just, Counsel Carmichael found that gentleman I was talking about, but then I'd found another one. So anyway, just to, I thought on the application, which I have here, like I say, here's another example, Janus Rosa.
Which page, Sean?
41. 41. It doesn't say anywhere the position, but I do see where, where Counsel Carmichael found, if you go back, then I can see it. But I thought it's, it should say it here. Expiration date, current term expires. But nowhere does it say what position, and same as that other one. This looks like a different application than some of the other ones we've gotten. And the same as that gentleman I just spoke about, nowhere does it say, that other page I just gave you guys. Anyway.
Town Minister, can we, can we look at the form?
See, this person wrote it in, Conservation Committee, but.
To ensure that there's a spot for them to actually put the committee they're applying to.
Yep. Should be.
Anyway, just, just to make the process go, you know, smoother. I know we talked about Kathy not stamping, and unless it was on, and there's two here. Someone knew, I guess, because they were on the, they were on the agenda, what they were putting in, but you wouldn't know it from these two pieces of paper. Just want to make sure we're consistent.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Counsel Levy.
I was wondering if the council might want to consider at some point, meeting with MRI or Don Jutton at, you know, regarding personnel issues, just, just to see what his company can or can't provide for staffing. I think they staff from, I mean, obviously, we don't have Julie anymore. There are different positions that we may or may not need to fill. And they don't always, at least the towns he's worked with, don't always hire people, but they, they work through him. And I didn't know if the council was interested at all in at least hearing him out and just seeing what kind of services he provides. If you want a tangible example, it would be like if someone was looking, and I'm just picking a number like finance, you know, some of the towns actually use MRI. They have a permanent finance person that MRI provides for that town, but the town doesn't actually have that person as a hire, it goes through MRI. It makes hiring and firing not quite as complex as it is when you actually hire someone. He had a short discussion with me back in December regarding the fact that a lot of towns go that route, and I was frankly surprised to hear that. And I thought maybe it wouldn't be the worst thing, since we are looking for a finance person and, and maybe others, I don't know, if it would be worth meeting with them. I didn't know if there was a downside to it.
Is this button something new, or is this a comment on this?
Well, I can certainly comment on this. I'm familiar with Don Jutton, he's, he's associated with the efficiencies committee, and he's currently on our payroll as a consultant for that. However, at this point, you know, I don't see where, for example, Ms. Glover's position, I don't believe that there's any intent to replace that, anybody for that position, because that would obviously create another person on the payroll.
I was thinking about finance.
And the finance, one of the things that, that I think I've heard through our TA Committee, Search Committee, is that when a new, new town administrator does come on board, sometimes they like to have their choice of person. And it would be, you know, you'd want somebody that would not necessarily be a contractual employee, although Matt currently is, is contractual, is that how we set up contractual. And my conversations with Matt prior to the council changing is the fact that he's willing to stay on board pretty much until such a time as, as we have another finance pretty much until such a time as, as we have another finance director in place. You know, I, if the council wants to speak with MRI on this regard, they're certainly eligible to do that. But I just don't see what he can bring to the town unless we want to become a part-time employee. And I don't think you're gonna get the type of dedication that you would from an individual that this is their only job. And you know what? If New Market doesn't want me, well, I'll just go to work in Durham or the next place that they find for me. So I would certainly prefer to have a person that is hired for New Market, especially in that position. Because we all know how valuable it is to make sure we get things right. So I would want someone that would be working for the town of New Market forty hours a week, fifty-two weeks a year. That, that's my take on it.
Counselor Carmichael?
I have no problem with what Counselor Branch just said. I, I actually think that might be the way to go. Is there any way of us as, as a council to do an interview along with the new town administrator when he's hired to put a person in that place? I know in the past it probably hasn't been that policy, you want to bring your own guy aboard and their own girl, whatever. But I'd like us to consider that.
Correct me from, is this one of the positions that the council has to approve? It's not.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but I.
I, well, I'll let everyone else speak. Counselor Bentley?
I, I guess I didn't know we were waiting until the town administrator got in place to do this, and maybe I should have. But, and luckily we have, you know, I think he's certainly quite competent, Matt, and he's been a godsend helping fix this. If that's the direction we're gonna go, I think I would, not knowing the town administrator, it's thirty days or ninety days or a hundred and twenty days, still puts it in limbo. And I thought we'd spoken about the price that we're paying. Matt is substantially higher than if we had a regular full-time person. So I certainly respect and understand maybe the new administrator wanting to have his person there. But there might be some, we saw what happened last time here, folks. We had a administrator come and bring a financial person from another town with him and we're still feeling repercussions. And so I, I think that's a discussion we need to have very shortly. I don't think it should be tonight, but I think we need to discuss that shortly. If we're indeed really waiting, I, I don't agree with that.
I was just gonna say, Matt, when he initially came on board, was working five days a week because we wanted to straighten out a lot of the issues that we initially faced with the downtown project and taxes and things. At the current time, Matt is only working three days a week. Because a lot of the stuff is, is getting wrapped up and he's able to come in here and focus on the day-to-day activities and make sure that during that period of time, he's able to address them and, you know, can move on. You know, so we've really cut back his time and the amount of our funds that were being expended for him. You know, the, the discussion has been, I, and I think it's realistic that, you know, the administrator has the opportunity to hire somebody that he or she feels comfortable with and knows that, you know, there's that relationship that they can work together, so.
I'm gonna say something, then it's Counselor Levy, then back to Counselor Carmichael. I, I think that the new town administrator should be a person who is involved in the process for hiring someone because this person's gonna work directly for them. So this person has to be in it. Now, that does not preclude that we can, looking at the timeline for where we think the administrator hire is gonna occur and then saying, backing off and saying, okay, at what point do we need to start putting the job description out on the street for the, for the finance director? We should get ahead of the curve and get the job description out on the street. And, and if it's talking to MRI initially as, as, as due diligence and gathering facts, that we should do all of that now so that we can get ahead of the curve as opposed to waiting for the administrator and then doing it. But the administrator totally, in my opinion, needs to be someone who's involved in the conversation of hiring because this person's gonna work directly with this person. Gary, Ed, and John?
I think there's a couple of misconceptions. They would be theoretically working for us fifty-two weeks a year. I'm not looking for a part-time person in any way, shape, or form. What I didn't realize was, and I, I'm not gonna quote numbers because I just don't know, but it was surprising. It was in the double digits, I believe, for towns that actually use MRI to supply town managers for those towns in a, on a permanent basis. And so it's, just for clarif, clarification purposes, this is not for a part-time. That's, that's number one. Number two, and I sort of felt this way back when we discussed it back in December a little bit. I just don't see that, whether it's Dawn with MRI or anybody else, I don't think there's any downside to this council getting options. Seeing how other towns do it, why they do it. I was shocked, to be honest with you, that a town would, you know, not hire a permanent, wouldn't, permanent person. I.e. that they worked directly for the town and not for MRI for the town. And I can't remember all the reasons he gave, but I was rather taken aback by the amount of towns that actually do that. So there is some reasoning behind it. I don't know all of the nuances because I didn't keep a, a record of it and I didn't discuss it very long with them. But just so we're crystal clear, this isn't about a part-time person. It's, I think it gives a town a little buffer. I think it wouldn't be bad for the council to, to meet with, with Dawn or another company. I don't really care if it's Dawn or somebody else, just to get a perspective on how other communities do it, why they do it. What services MRI or Dawn can provide. And if we, if we like what we hear, great. If we don't, so be it. But at least we have options that we really don't have now or know about now. So that's the only reason I brought it up. I, I is, I mean, it was a fifteen-minute conversation with him, so all I know is I was surprised that they, they actually don't hire them directly for the town. I don't know if it has to do with insurance. I don't have, know if it has to do with termination or whatever else. But it, it does change the dynamic. And then the only other real quick thing I would say is, and it flew out of my head, just be with me one second. I'll pass now and if it comes back to me.
I'm gonna go to, Counselor Wright hasn't had an opportunity to speak on it yet and he hit his button, so I'm gonna let him go.
I'd just like to get MRI in here and hear what they have to say. Different point of view, give us some options. We have nothing to lose by it.
Got it? Counselor Carmichael?
Yes, I agree with both those counselors over there, Mr. Levy and Mr. Wright. But I also agree with you said. I think when we bring somebody in here, it's known to them that the council's gonna sit in on the financial. It's too important now. There's too many people out there upset. And we just can't say, just say, yeah, pick your own person, because I've seen that work in companies before. And I've seen sales forces bringing these people as buddies. And we can't go along with that. We've gotta stand on top of this one. Thank you.
Counselor Bentley?
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think it would hurt to listen to Jutton or any of the other various plethora of companies out there that do it. But I still don't, you know, whether it's thirty days or a hundred and twenty days, I think we could at least start the process. We have a job description. If we don't, we could go to another town nearby and say, what's the job description, looking for a finance director and start that. You could even start getting the applicants and get fifty of them, just like we got for town administrator. So when the town administrator, at least the process is going. We could realistically, by one of the reports, be looking at a hundred and twenty more days after the part of closing. So the closing is April first. We're three months out before someone even gets here, maybe. And then they start the process. And it's great that Matt's now part-time, so that eases me a little bit about the, the price we're paying. But still, just for everyone's thing, and it's, Matt's great. We could start the process. We could get applicants and we could get a job description. And I would even think you could weed out some people right off, even before administrator. But just, I, I don't think it hurts anything to try to get the process going because we could be, if, if he's a hundred and twenty days out, then that, that finance director would be a hundred and twenty days out after that. So we're talking half a year. Anyway.
I'm gonna, before I go to Counselor Levy, I'm gonna answer something Counselor Levy said. I, I do know why you would subcontract as opposed to hire directly. You're absolutely right. I mean, you know, fringe, do you know, help, all the benefits? You money, you take a salary, you multiply by one point five or two, and that's what anyone's actually paying for an individual. And it's also for, it's much easier to get in and out of a contract than it is to now. That goes two ways, though. It's much easier, you know, when you, when you have like a prenup, it works for, it works both sides. So, much easier for them to decide they want to go to. We just have to know, we're having these conversations, that, that, that all of us is coming into play.
A point of order.
Point of order.
Come on up.
Rosie and Quacks, three thirty-two, Wally Falls. According to the town charter, the town council has no authority to interfere with the administrator's hiring and firing. The only two people that this town council can determine whether to hire or fire are the department heads, which is Rick Malaski and Chief CS. You'd have to change the town charter before you could hire someone. If you wanted to work with Ed, at the still town administrator and go with MRI for a finance person full-time from that agency or any agency. And then maybe the new town administrator that came in would agree with keeping him because of financial reasons like Bennie's in retirement. And I also agree that I wouldn't want to see, we did have an experience. I don't want any town administrator to bring in someone that he worked with before. So, just for your.
Counselor?
It came back to me. It's, I'm a little slow in the drawing. I, what, what I forgot to say was I had a different take on it. I don't think it's necessarily bad that we're a little bit more involved. I, I'm not saying interfere. But sometimes when people bring other people, it, it doesn't always work out great. And as far as, and, and, and to me, this is not a definitive thing. All I want to do is just get a perspective. Just, just to, for sake of addressing that point, and I'm not saying we would ever do this. We could say to Dawn, geez, you got these four people that could be a greater town administrator. They're looking, you know, for a long-term thing, blah, blah, blah. We could decide to go that route. I am not advocating that at all. What I'm saying is I don't think there's a downside to at least hearing what other towns do and what services he provides. And that, that's the only reason I brought it up, because I think we're sort of limiting ourselves. And we might need Matt more than three days a week, you know, right now, but we're not because budgetary issues. You know, it might be nice to have him five days, particularly with all the financial issues that are going on in the town. Even like with the resolutions tonight and things of that nature. So, anyway, I, I, I don't think, you know, we're gonna meet with him and say, okay, this is what we're gonna do. I just think it would be good to hear from someone. That's my real point.
Do, do we have, since, we don't have the authority to get involved, as the charter said. But do we have the ability to say whether we're gonna build or buy, whether, whether we're gonna subcontract or hire? Is that something that the council has authority over or is that entirely the realm of the administrator? Determining between, for, for the, for the finance director I'm talking right now, subcontract versus hire, MRI versus, versus, or, or, not MRI, I don't want to use it.
I believe that that would reside with the town administrator because he's the, he or she is the individual judge with the administration of the town. The council deals with all the other issues, so it'd be that person's responsibility.
Okay. Counselor Levy, then Counselor.
Ed, did you, did you hire Matt?
Yes.
Did you call Dawn?
No, I did not. I had a conversation with the, the auditors. I asked them for a recommendation. I met with Carol Coppola.
Was he working for MRI then, or, I'm sorry?
No.
Okay.
He worked for, for Coppola Rockford.
I see.
And I met with her, but I, I told her what, or explained to her what I was looking for for an individual. What the situations that we had here. She said she would get back in touch with me and she called me up one day and says, I have somebody. And the person is someone that you know, and it's Matt Angel. And I said, that's fantastic. Because I knew Matt from the, from the audit. I understood, I, I, I knew Matt. He was a great teacher. He took the time to explain things and I felt very comfortable with him. When he came on board, he continues to be the bearer of bad news. But at least when he came and he talked about it, he could explain it and, you know, here's, here's where we are. Here's where we need to go and here's how we're gonna get there.
Now, just for clarification for all of us, because, including myself, because I don't know. I'm assuming Matt is being contracted out right now, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so I mean, that's sort of what I'm talking about in a circuitous way.
And, and I guess, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, but I, you know, I have the utmost faith and trust in Matt. And I think that, I don't know that this council could find somebody better than Matt. There probably is somebody out there, but I think that Matt has the, he understands the different nuances of New Market in the short time that he's been here and he knows where to start digging at things. And, and, you know, I've seen him come into my office and say one thing, walk out, and hour later comes back and says, you know something? I've found that, but here's how we got to where we are. And I think that if the council does anything, is leave Matt in place until the administrator has the opportunity to look for a new financed individual. We've been through the job description. I asked Matt to look at it, you know, to weed out what, from his perspective, what we should be looking for for an individual. He's given that to me. I've reworked it. I've given it back to him. So we've played around with it. We think we have a solid job description at this point that can be put out there when the administrator. When the, if, if the council knows that they're gonna hire an administrator in, let's say, June. Maybe in May, the middle of May, we put an ad out. So that way, when that person comes in, they hit the ground. Because there's gonna be a timeframe between when the council hires somebody and when they're gonna give notice and are gonna be able to come in here. So to sort of play with that and also work with that individual in the interim to get the ad out, start getting the resumes in. So there's a shorter period of time when that person comes on board. They may be looking at resumes. They're gonna have people coming in over the next couple, three weeks when they're on board. And maybe we have somebody on board in, within six weeks.
And I'll leave it at that. That, that, my only point was I, I just didn't think there was a downside to just getting some input as to the alternatives. Because I don't know them all. I don't think the council knows them all. And I think we're shorting ourselves by not, we may end up leaving that meeting saying, that's ridiculous. That would never work for us. But, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen in the future. We could hire someone. God forbid something could happen to them. You know, health issues, whatever. I, I just don't know why we wouldn't want to see what's out there. That's, that's just really my point, so I'll, I'll not be belaboring.
All I was gonna say basically was, you know, I know we can't tell the administrator who to hire or even theoretically be involved in the process, but we can certainly suggest to the administrator, you know, what we would like to see, what we're looking for. I, I firmly believe that based on the replies that we've received recently with, with the town administrator search that, you know, we could go out theoretically with, with the job description and requirements that we're looking for. We could go out with that April first. Because you're still gonna have to go April first to, to May thirtieth before you have a closing date to make sure that you hit the same periodicals that we hit this first time. That's what takes the longest, is giving it the time to run in, in the magazines that you want to hit, which is primarily your municipalities and your people around. I can say, based on some of the applications that I saw, there were actually some good financial people that were, were in those, those applications. And they, they weren't that far removed and their salaries weren't that far off from what I believe we've paid in the past. So, you know, I certainly agree with the Vice Chair that we should get the RFP or the, the, the process out there as quickly as we can. And I, and I don't think April first is too early to do it. I really don't.
Given that, do we want to, if we heard from an agency like MRI first to start the process up, is that interfering to the level that we can?
I don't think it's interfering.
No.
No?
Because you're talking in general.
That hurts nothing to talk.
It's what the town is gonna do on how he's gonna manage them.
So let's.
And if I may, maybe you also want to bring in someone like Carol Coppola.
Yeah, I'm not.
Have them both on different days and talk about the resources that they have.
I would be so happy to just get some, just some outside input for the entire council. Because I've never really used an agency like that. I've used some, I've used some headhunters in the past to make hires. But I've not used someone that actually would, you know, technically hire the employee, but, you know, the town utilized. utilized the subcontract out. I didn't want to use a term that wasn't appropriate, so, anyway, that's just my suggestion, whether it's Carol Coppola or Dawn, and, you know, at the end of the day, so we, and we could do it in one meeting, and we could, you know, forty-five minutes, forty-five minutes, be done with it, and then we could make some, you know, we could have a discussion. I mean, what's the downside? We talk for thirty-five, forty minutes about, you know, trash cans and stuff on Main Street. I mean, this is important stuff, I think, in general for the town, and I'd certainly like to know the options, and I don't want to do it in a vacuum. I'd like to do it as a council, personally. So, that's my take.
Counselor Wright.
Well, no, I'm just trying to figure out if we think we could make this work next Wednesday, the 28th. It's an open, open date for us.
I mean, you can have the conversation, I can obviously watch it, but...
For work, not for fun.
Can we do it at our next, maybe our next council meeting, or if they wanted to come in and meet at six o'clock or 5:45?
I have, Becky Vamadudi wants to come in to talk about tax-eating properties with the council, non-public.
Is the 11th too long?
Right, six o'clock.
What, Mike?
The 11th?
The 11th.
That's the off week for the council.
And before this conversation, we haven't even, we haven't talked once as a council about the, this, about the finance director permanent hire, at least in a real, robust way, so I don't think it's too late to wait the 11th to have this conversation. Is anyone else?
I'm talking about it to in a more of a general way, because, you know, today could be finance, tomorrow could be another area that we...
Right. That's what you'll get from Dawn and Carol, you'll get finance director, you'll get DPW hat, I mean, you'll get any municipal position that you've got, really.
So, pick a date, you know, and...
We just did, the 11th.
Let's do the 11th, can we start it at six? Is six possible?
11th is a what day?
It's a Wednesday, it's a off Wednesday. Six is going to be tough for me, but if it has to be six, we can do it six.
Do six, does six-thirty work?
I can make six-thirty work.
If we can do six-thirty and have one at six-thirty to seven, make sure that we kick them out the door by six-thirty, seven-thirty, then the second one, seven-thirty, eight-thirty?
Yeah. I think we need to give them a good forty-five minutes or so, anyway, to an hour.
Yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other old new business?
The town will appreciate that.
Go ahead.
Of all the rules.
You're the man.
I just wanted to bring up that Counselor Wright and myself went down today, and we rode on a route with two ladies down at the Meals on Wheels, Carol and Kim, and you went, Mr. Wright went with Carol, and I went with Kim, and I really enjoyed the time. We got to meet a lot of people that can't get out at all, and they're very delightful people, had some great conversation with them, and I'm looking forward to doing it again in the future. And I gave you a little pamphlet on that, and I don't know what we contribute as a town to Meals on Wheels, but I think we should probably look at something in the future for them, it's a very caring organization, and when they go into these homes, the apartments, they also check to make sure that people are safe. You know, it's not just, here's a meal to buy. Some of these people, it's only contact they have during the day.
Well, thank you for, both of you for doing that.
Do you have any further to say on that?
No, I mean, it was a real eye-opener. I mean, sometimes you want to feel sorry for yourself, but with some of the people we met today, it just tears your heart apart. And like I said, it's a wellness check, and, you know, they, they want to know if we were going to start editing, or we're going to start delivering meals.
And you said...
I'd love to, but, I'm just saying, it's a very rewarding experience, and I recommend that. Anyone in the public who'd like to help out, they're really, they can use the help, you know, so where they cause.
Thank you. Counselor Levy.
Yeah, I think that's great. You know, the last time I went to the senior center, which was about a week ago, they asked if we could do that, and I could not do it, but I asked Ed, and Ed said he could make the time, and I didn't know Dean was going to go, but I think it's great, and they said, you know, most of the communities around us have officials, whether it's the mayor, you know, mayoral type of government or town council or whatever, but I think it would be good, you know, for the council, maybe once in a while, you know, I love going to the senior center, and I don't know if we're always invited, but, you know, it doesn't have to be, you know, about politics at all. I mean, I've really enjoyed my time, I've gotten to, I've gotten to know Mike's mother-in-law a little bit on occasion, and some other nice people, and I have to say, they're really, it's worth doing, so I'll leave it at that. I think it would really be a nice thing for people to do. So, thank you. And they could use some financial help, too, as everybody knows, so.
Thank you, Counselor Levy. Any other old new business?
Yes. I, I, no, I'm a counselor, but, I guess one of the things that I would like to encourage the council as a whole to do is to maybe set one of the, they're off Wednesdays, and pick a department and take a tour of it. I think that one of the things that I've experienced, not only here, but in a lot of other places, that individuals become counselors or, and/or selectmen, and never stepped foot in a department's facility, and I think that that's one of the things that I'd like to encourage, and maybe at the same time, bring budget committee members along, so that they can ask questions, and they can see and have a better understanding as to the facilities the town has, the equipment they have, and it becomes a lot more meaningful during the budget time. So, if the council's willing, I'm more than happy to work with the department heads on setting up a schedule for both groups.
I, I think it's a great idea. I mean, I was on the list of things I was going to bring up in old new business, was for the new counselors, but I think it'd be great for all, and the budget committee as well, to have that opportunity. I think that's great.
I will work on that.
Thank you. Two other things, I meant to ask Matt, when he was here, to post that, the briefing, to the website?
Yes, we're going to do that.
Okay, good, post it to the website. And the other thing was, and maybe we don't want to get into a deep conversation about it right now, but the process by which we set goals as a council is something I'd really like to look at, like, I feel like last year, we set, we set goals, and a lot of stuff happened, the shifting of the charter, and a lot of other things happened that sort of shifted us off, off of a lot of the goals that we had, and there's a lot of reasons for it, so, but I would like us to really go through, maybe set a workshop, one of our first workshops aside as a goal-setting workshop, and really, as a council, hash through, what do we want our year-long goals to be, and what are they actually driving at, what are the strategies we're going to have, and allow those strategies and the supporting tactics to drive what our meeting agendas look like by assessing where we're standing against achieving those long-term benchmarks, and having intermediate benchmarks towards those goals, so that, as opposed to, we talk about a lot of very important stuff during these meetings, but sometimes I feel like we're not building up towards and assessing how we're getting towards what our goals are as a whole, and knowing that I was here my first year in a very odd year where that wasn't able to happen as much as it normally would. Counselor Wright.
Yeah, goals and vision. I think vision is also very important, goes hand-in-hand with goals.
Counselor Levy.
While we're on that, you know, I might suggest that the citizens who do watch this, and a lot of them watch our meetings, they should email the administrator or individual counselors things that they would like to see us do, just to get some public input. I mean, I don't think it's a bad thing to listen, I get a lot of, I get a lot of input. So, I think, and it might be, you know, something we could integrate into what we're coming up with for this year, so.
I agree. Good. Great. Any other old new business? Next meeting date is April 4th.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you very much, counselors.
Good job. Come on, Kathy. Good job.